Of the March 6, 2025, Powhatan County Board of Supervisors and Powhatan County School Board Joint Budget Workshop to order. The records show that all Board Supervisor members are present along with Mr. Shardine, and all school board members are present except for Mrs. Hurt, District 1, along with our Superintendent Dr. Taggins.
With the meeting called to order, I'd like to ask Ms. Morissette to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and Dr. Taylor at the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you pray with me? Heavenly Father, you've told us in your word that if you lack wisdom to ask, and so this afternoon as we continue to navigate the budgetary waters of our county, we pray and ask that you would give us wisdom, that we would know how to lead and what to do to best serve our residents and our students. We pray that in Jesus' name. Amen.
Do we have any requests to postpone agenda items, additions, deletions, or changes in the order of presentation? Hearing none. Do I have a formal approval of the agenda?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that brings us to the public comment period. The Board will now hear from citizens who wish to speak. Please remember, if you're speaking on behalf of yourself, you have three minutes. If you're speaking on behalf of a group, you have five minutes. As you direct these comments, please make sure that you state your name and your address. Make sure the comments are to each Board as a whole and not individual members, or the audience, or any other attendee. You shall refrain from utilizing any criticizing individual or group vulgar, rude, or threatening language. All right, and the first on the list, sir, please.
Senator Cox, Senator Cox Miller, I'm 448, 1420. I'm representing the Oakland State Public Affairs Association. I'd like to request five minutes.
So moved.
Thank you. What I'm going to do today, I sent some comments to the County Board of Supervisors yesterday. But probably the school board members and...
Members of the audience have not seen that, so I'm essentially going to read what I sent to the County Board of Supervisors. But before I do that, I want to congratulate Brett Shardine for his second year, second anniversary as the county administrator. May you have many more, and I want to wish you a lot of success. All right. I have some general comments about the proposed fiscal '26 Powhatan County and schools budget based on the high-level data that was available at the county website. A budget represents the financial resources needed to achieve short and long-term objectives consistent and in alignment with visions and strategic priorities. In looking through the proposed fiscal '26 budgets for the Powhatan County and the schools, here is what I find. There is no linkage between the proposed budgets and the goals of the strategic priorities that were approved just over a month ago. The proposed budgets do not show how short and long-term objectives and performance measures are being met. For example, does the higher spending help us achieve the goal of 85-15 tax split that we have in mind from the current 92-8 split by the end of fiscal '26, or fiscal '27, or fiscal '28? It's not apparent from the budget. There is no ranking of priorities, for example, high, medium, or low, must-haves versus nice-to-have, needs versus wants. There is no discussion of what can be deferred to Year 2 or Year 3 and still achieve major objectives and goals. There is no assessment of risks of deferring projects or initiatives and risk mitigation possibilities. There is some indication of the main drivers of the increase and their contributions in the spending, such as wage and salary increases, new hires, debt service, schools transfer. So there is some indication of that in the budget that was on the county website. There are no results of synergy, process improvement, or productivity projects over the last one to two years that fully or partially offset the cost increases. There is no information in the county-wide raise of 3% if that is a general cost of living increase or a weighted average based on performance. Similarly, there is no information if the budgets are based on a start date of Day 1 for fiscal '26 for the new hires or a more realistic start date. It is disingenuous and misleading for the county administrator to show a graph of the trend in the tax rate without also showing a similar trend in the property assessed values, since both the assessed values and the tax rates play a part in the overall tax assessment. This comment also applies to the regional tax rate comparison, and all the more reason for proper benchmarking. I have four recommendations to create a more robust budget in support of an ambitious strategic plan that was approved six weeks ago. First, link budgets to SMART targets. SMART stands for specific, measurable, achievable, relevant, and time-bound, because if you do that, you gain credibility and acceptance. Instill a relentless focus on results. Define the critical few performance measures and deliver on them. Eliminate duplicative functions between the county and the schools. There are a lot of support services that the schools and the county provide that are duplicative in nature. Solicit ideas for improvement and productivity from the residents. Brainstorming sessions, frequent town hall meetings like Mr. Kinney had last evening, quarterly in-depth discussions on one or two specific topics. So, I know the buzzer went off. I'll conclude. As my friend Donald might say, make Powhatan County and public schools the standard of excellence in rural Virginia while living within our means. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Barley?
I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you all. It feels a little bit better out here than it does in those chairs, just so you know. I'll try to be at least concise and to the point with what I want to talk about. It has to do with, I think it was in the budget last year, the $168,000, $69,000 regarding this property that should have been transferred over to the Board of Supervisors, to the county. I'm sure you guys know what I'm talking about. The public may not know, but in December of 2021, December the 20th, I'm going to read you the minutes in that meeting. Hocahontas Landmark Center Discussion. Mr. Smithers introduced the two-option resolution that is being asked to propose to the school board regarding the Powhatan Landmark Center. Chair Carmack motioned to move the two resolutions forward to have the school board add the item to their next monthly agenda. That motion passed. And the school board added it to their January agenda. And then, on January the 24th, Board of Supervisors met of 2022, and at that time, I was the chairman of the Board of Supervisors. And there was a resolution that was discussed at that meeting, and that resolution transfers the property. It reads, the resolution number R22, or 202203, authorizing the acceptance of parcel numbers 026-7A, 2641B, and portions of 2641A, and parcels 2632, from Powhatan County School Board to Powhatan, to Powhatan County. You're familiar with resolutions and resolutions, the whereas, 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 whereas. Whereas, the school board declared the property surplus and approved the conveyance of the above referenced property on January the 11th, 2022. That was a 5-0 vote by the school board, of which some of you were on that board or sitting in those chairs today. That was then resolved that the Powhatan County Board of Supervisors authorizes the Powhatan County Administrator to execute all documents necessary to transfer the designated property to Powhatan County with such restrictions and limitations as referenced in this resolution, including assurances from Powhatan County that the safety of all Powhatan County school students will be treated as paramount in the use of the designated property, adopted by the Powhatan County Board of Supervisors on January 24, 2022, and it's signed by Ned Smithers and myself. I guess what I'm asking for, as opposed to, it seems like there's some discussion, it was on the budget last year, where $168,000 leased from the, the county will lease the property from the schools and pay $14,000 a month, according to the budget, the way I look at it. There's a couple of things that I would say about that. This should have happened, it didn't happen. There's a lot of reasons, and everybody can come up with a lot of excuses and so forth, but the bottom line to it is, the Board of Supervisors has control over that, according to that vote, and when you have an asset as a board, I don't know why you would give it to the schools. I have no idea why you would do that. You're here to look out for the taxpayers' dollars, and when you're doing that, I'll ask you this real quick, and then I'll get out of here with this. You have an asset. Why would you give the asset away? I don't understand that. If you're looking out for the dollars of the taxpayers, and when you do that, if they keep the property that's already been paid for by taxpayers with taxpayers' money, now the taxpayers are going to pay for it the second time in a lease agreement. There's six acres involved in the back. The school board didn't even know they owned the six acres. The property, in my opinion, and it's just my opinion, you guys as a board can change it and do whatever you want to do with it, and I do appreciate you allowing me to speak beyond, Mr. Chairman.
If we could wrap up, Mr. Barley?
Yeah. But I do think that if you guys would look at what's best for the county, the taxpayers, I think you'll see that an asset is something you want in your coffre. You don't want to be giving it out there, letting them stay, letting the school board still have that property, and then you're going to fund whatever they need when, from what I understand, there's a $70 million bill sitting out there for property that the schools own that hasn't been taken care of. And you want to give them more property?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Tammy C.
Shortened version. I mean, the longer version. I had to shorten it, I have three minutes. Y'all ready?
Go ahead.
All righty. Good evening. Board of Supervisors, you were elected to uphold a huge responsibility, and that means understanding how a school system should run, not just approving whatever comes your way. Anyone can see that Powhatan County schools are top-heavy. We have too many administrators and not enough teachers. Why is there such a need for central office staff when most decisions are funneled through Sands Anderson Law Firm? It is very disappointing. Parents shouldn't have to fight for their children's education. Federal funding for special education exists to cover speech therapy, private placement, transportation, et cetera, whatever the student needs, whether it is educational, physical, mental, or behavior problems. Yet Powhatan refuses to use that money as intended, leading to unnecessary legal fees. Instead, parents are pressured into signing CSA forms that are not required. There is no regulation on this via FOIA. This is wrong. If Powhatan followed federal guidelines, there would be no legal battles, and if they keep ignoring the law, the county will lose their federal funding. Now, let's talk about leadership. The superintendent's salary jumped from $173,810 in 2022 to $224,187 in 2024. That is 540% higher than the median income, and that is a 50,000, over 50,000 increase in two and a half years. She receives $700 a month in car allowance. She also receives $15,000 extra a year towards retirement. Meanwhile, teachers are underpaid, students lack resources. So, shouldn't a salary increase like that be voted on? Perhaps we need a superintendent who actually does the job and instead of drowning our county in legal fees. That's why y'all want to up our taxes. It's because of her salary. Most of the central office staff makes right around $100,000 in careless legal spending. I mean, anyone whom would spend over $50,000 in legal fees to fight paying $1,300 for my son's school program that they receive federal funding for, but choose to funnel it elsewhere. That is major violations, which I included in y'all's packet. And finally, if public comments were actually heard at our Board of Supervisors meetings instead of dismissed as not germane, maybe we wouldn't be in this mess. Being a good steward means listening to the public and taking action, and I thank y'all for listening to my comments.
Thank you. Kathy Halverson?
Thank you for the opportunity to address the board today. I'm here to raise some concerns regarding our district's budget and urge everyone in this room to be better stewards of taxpayer money. First, I want to acknowledge the request from the school board for additional funds. It's no secret that our district is currently facing a deficit, I believe it was 2.5 million, but we ask ourselves, why are we continually in the red? And why does it seem like there's no end to this financial challenge? One board member recently asked via a FOIA that I received, why we can never seem to resolve things. The unfortunate answer is that the system in place may actually benefit from this perpetual state of financial instability. It has become a business model, a model where certain parties profit from the ongoing challenges rather than working towards real, sustainable solutions. Not one time was there ever any type of settlement in three and a half years. You have to ask yourself why. Next, I want to address the issue of the superintendent's salary, $224,000 a year. We got rid of Eric Jones because he wasn't doing his job and his salary was way out of sorts for Powhatan County. Fifty, he was here how many years? $50,000 in two years? That's outrageous. Where's the evaluation? Where is this? We have hired like five central office positions in two years. Why are we not putting that to teachers? Why are, it's around robbing. We're paying legal fees. Somebody at the board meeting stated, they refused to do an RFP. You have to question yourself, why? What would have hurt just to see what was happening, to see if there was something better? But no, there was two that, no, definitely not. You have to look at the situations involved. Our children are not getting an education. They have been charging for speech therapy on my son for three and a half years. My son didn't have speech therapy since November 10 of 2021. That's a problem. That is a huge problem. To this day, I'm getting things stating, he is still enrolled at Powhatan County schools when he is enrolled at Liberty University. That's a problem. The Board of Supervisors has a due diligence. They are over their legal budget all these years. You've got to go ahead and get rid of Sands Anderson like Henrico County Public Schools did.
Thank you. That now brings us to our new business.
Good evening, Board, School Board, the members of the public. Appreciate the opportunity to present the county's draft FY '26 budget proposal to you all tonight. After that, we'll also look at the county's 10-year financial forecast model that we use to look at some of these decisions. So first, some of the guidelines that we use in budgeting and preparing this, again, relying on that 10-year financial forecast model to understand the implications and possible trajectory of our decisions. Always want to fund any new increase with recurring revenue, and of course, provide a balanced budget. Some of the policies maintain a general fund that's 15% of our operating revenues. The net tax-supported debt percent, no more than 4%. The percent of debt of our expenditures, ideally below 12, certainly no more than 15. All fund budgets are balanced, preserve our excellent AA+ bond rating, and fully fund all of our existing debt leases, contracts, and obligations, which this draft budget meets all of those criteria. So summary on the figures. General fund operating originally requested by our various departments was a little over $33.9 million. The proposed budget is about a million less than that at $32.8 million. This would be a general fund operating increase of about 6.3%, and that would be funded by a combination of general assessment growth, which was about 8% this time, new construction, and a proposed 72-cent real estate tax rate, which would be a 3-cent increase over the current 69-cent rate. Budget would feature 1.5 million additional increase to the school transfer, 3% pay increase for employees, and as we've tried to do recently in the past, make sure we're marrying that with schools and that we're moving our scales and benefits and such likewise so that we stay in harmony. Whether this would be, what mix of it would be, just a cost of living adjustment to our pay scales, how much of it would be a merit-based raise is to be determined. We're looking at what others in the region are doing and how they're upping their pay and scales, looking at what some, especially Henrico, I think they're looking at a pretty large increase. Likely most, if not all of this, would be recommended to go to upping our scales so that we don't fall behind again. You know, again, just a couple of years ago, we had to do a big lift, as you all did, to get ourselves competitive again in the region. We don't want to fall back again, so we'll be evaluating that. But 3%, a lot of that will go to moving our scales to make sure we're competitive and don't have a compression issue. And then requesting a total addition of 3.4 equivalent full-time positions, which we'll get into in the next couple slides. Tax rate of historical, tax rate trends in the county. So, as you can see, we're currently at 69 cents at the lowest rate, and then the proposed rate is 72 cents, while an increase would still be significantly lower than we've been in the past, but certainly do not take for granted that an increase is an increase. And to the speaker's questions about needing to show this alongside assessment other information, certainly we are open to providing whatever information helps the public and both bodies deliberate. So didn't have time to prepare any of that tonight, but we're happy to pull that information and share it for the boards or public regarding historic assessment trends, levels, rates of increase, et cetera. And then just showing where our rate stands in some of our peer localities. So we have different localities we compare ourselves to. This list is those that are generally rural, either in the region or nearby, so shows that we're not the lowest, not the highest, kind of median compared to those. But again, many other localities we could compare and, you know, show you all where they are and how we stand up, if you'd like to see. Then where the money goes, won't get too much into the school side because you'll all be presenting on that, but not surprisingly, the biggest percentage goes to instruction, as it should. On the county side, our biggest is public safety, also debt service, administration, health and welfare, which would include social services, public works, and others. Revenue increases. General fund proposed to be $82.7 million. That would be a $5.6 million increase, again funded by natural assessment growth, new construction, the additional 3 cent on the real estate rate, so that would come to $4.6 million. Changes in personal property and use of fund balance of $467,000. So then the accompanying expenditure increases, again, going to be the same number, $5.6 million. $569,000 of that is position requests, and again, to some of the questions we heard earlier, what is the start date? When we do that, we budget for worst case, so assuming that the position would start July 1. We also assume that everybody that would come in is going to take the highest family insurance plan. Now, we know a lot of times it takes a while to get these positions put in, can take a while to recruit them, and not everybody takes the family plan. So typically, we're going to be coming in lower than that, but we budget for the worst case financially. Then $754,000 is largely that 3% increase that we discussed, partially funded on the school side by the state, their 3%, as well as some of it provided by the state for 3% for some of our comp board-funded positions. Departmental operating increased $819,000. Again, still feeling some of the inflationary pressures and costs in services continue to increase. $904,000 would be the debt service starting this year for that $11.3 million we borrowed recently for some major school projects. As we continue to pay off our debt, county side debt would go down about $72,000. As I mentioned, an additional $1.5 million to the school transfer, and then CIP others, So some of the positions, or all of the positions that are proposed, a second deputy county administrator. In the last budget, we proposed a, and you all approved, the transportation manager using our dedicated transportation funds that we get from the CVTA. We get about $2, $2.5 million a year from the CVTA, but it's been slow-going on trying to get transportation projects done, largely because we don't have any dedicated staff to that effort, which takes a lot of time to keep those projects moving. Tried recruiting for that position, but it's been a very hard one to fill, so would propose to eliminate that position and roll those duties into deputy county administrator, who would be tasked with most of the county's transportation project portfolio. Some other things we considered in this budget that didn't fund that would be rolled into this. One would be public information. Originally had put in a full-time public information officer into the budget. We don't have that, and we would like to do more with increasing information to the public, the opportunity for them to get that, give feedback, have constructive feedback, meetings and such. Not proposing to fund at this time the full-time PIO, but some of those duties and expanding public information into the community would be with this. Board had had an interest in more proactive code enforcement. That's been largely complaint-based, can take quite a long time to work through the process as we have no one full-time dedicated to that. And being more proactive in some of our permits and condition use permits and things that we put conditions on, but then we don't necessarily go out and proactively enforce or inspect. So would allow us to concentrate more on that. And then now we have newly adopted strategic plans, so we'll also see this position concentrating on... on how do we fold those strategic initiatives and performance measures into our operations and plans. Then two full-time firefighters. So last year, we went after the SAFER grant, but the board had said if we were not successful in getting that, then we would still fund two full-time fire positions. Pleased that we were successful, did get that grant, so this would just memorialize putting in those two full-time firefighter positions that the board had pledged to do last year. Currently have a part-time EMS coordinator. We propose to make that an EMS captain and make it a full-time position. Our emergency management coordinator is a part-time position, but would propose to remain part-time but would increase their hours. Add an additional sheriff patrol deputy, and funding would be included in this for vehicle and equipment. Treasurer has a part-time deputy clerk position. That would be eliminated. They do not see the need in our public works and facilities maintenance. Currently have two part-time positions. We would like consolidate those into one single full-time position. And then in our office of elections, the no-excuse absentee volunteer coordinator, currently part-time, they would like to move that to full-time. That was something that was proposed initially last year, then the electoral board said they wanted to take a little more time to evaluate it, look at it, and then came back this year feeling there is the need at this time, so fully supporting that. And there's some consolidation of positions in finance, so the net impact of all of that is the equivalent of 3.4 full-time. And then this is just some historical trends of the past five years of funding to both county and schools. And then our budget calendar. So we're in the first kind of third of FY '26 budget calendar. The next process for us is next week, May, sorry, March 13th, we'll have a workshop in the Village Building Conference Room at 1:00 PM. And that's where we'll go, department by department. So we'll present in greater detail on each of the county departments and have our staff leadership there to go through more of what they've accomplished and what they hope to accomplish with the changes in this budget. So that is my summary on the county side FY '26 budget. Happy to answer questions now or then go into the model and take questions after.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Powers. Brett, clarify for me on firefighters. Last budget cycle, mid-year, we talked about maybe adding two in July if that program was or wasn't funded. And I think those two positions were postponed in lieu of some scheduling changes, which I assume have worked out well. Do we have a net of two openings or do we have backfilling two? Do we have a total of four open?
So we have two full-time firefighter positions that we're recruiting for now. Those are existing positions already funded in the budget. So recruiting for those, holding interviews and still seeking applicants, so we have two to fill already. Then this would be two on top of that, which would be the two you referenced that we had discussed adding last year.
So we'd have a net?
Yeah. I would hope by the time this is in, we would have those other two full, but yeah, if we started, if we put these in today, we'd have four to have.
One other quick question on the page 11 of your, of the presentation on school debt service 904. Is that largely made up of the 11-3 that we borrowed?
Correct.
That's the debt, or tell me what you're talking about?
Yes, yes, yeah.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. McLeod.
Quick question for you, Brett. The maintenance workers, the two part-time positions, are both of them going to be elevated full-time or just one?
We'd be consolidating the two-part time into one. The net impact is less. There are some benefits when you go from part-time to full-time, but it would be much of it offset by eliminating those two part-time.
Got you. Thank you, sir.
Ms. Chairman, one last question if I could.
Ms. Powers.
Brett, you have, you have a lot of duties that you're going to be asking the deputy this addition, if it's approved, to take care of. I'm feeling a lot of issue with code enforcement and ordinance enforcement. And you enumerated a number of additional tasks this superhuman is going to have to be addressing. I just want to encourage you to make sure that we do a better job of enforcing our cups and ordinances that are in place now, especially as it has to do with sign ordinance, which I know you know I have been concerned about. And it's, I understand code enforcement is not the duty that everyone just relishes doing, but we need to give some attention to it.
Yes, yes, agree.
Ms. Chairman.
Ms. Kenny.
Just one question, Brett. Do we know why in just four years, the school transfers went up $13 million?
Largely defer to schools on that, but I know, you know, much of the same inflation that we dealt with, CIP, capital needs, but otherwise certainly let schools answer what their needs have been and what they've had to fund. Yeah, I can assume what some of those changes have been and why the increases, but I think schools would be better to answer what's, you know, happened over the past four years or so.
I know after, over the last three years, I mean, one of the things was we have completed a salary study, and so that was over a million dollars to be able to put our staff back at mid-range. And we even put a cap on that, so not all staff actually got back in mid-range. Also, the year prior to that was another million dollars because the, to equate the schools to the county on medical and dental insurance so that it was, the same amount was being paid because it was a huge differential in what school staff were paying versus county staff. And so we really tried to get together and then have stayed together on increases to our staffs between county and schools since we're, you know, here in the same community. And about six, just as a reminder, about 60% of our staff live in, who work for the schools, live in Palatine. But that and then the others, you know, there would obviously have been CIP work that has been done, and we can get you a list of that if you'd like.
Yeah, that would be appreciated. Because between 2022 and 2026, student population has gone down, but your expenses keep going up. And I know we probably get into more of that, but I just need to be able to justify to the voters in my district, you know, why that happened.
Brett, do you have a forecast model to go over before we dive into the schools?
Pull that up now. So the 10-year financial forecast model, it's a tool that we use, again, to look at the decisions that we make and what the implications may be for the long term. So again, it's a tool to be used amongst all of the other information sources that we have. It's a collection of assumptions that we put into that that then show us where financially we may end up in the future, giving us a trajectory. But some caveats with it, disclaimers, you know, ultimately, it's a collection of assumptions, and those are our best guesses. They're very educated guesses. You know, we work very hard to make sure we have the best information from Commissioner of Revenue, Weldon Cooper Center, all census, economists, everything in there, but at the end of the day, you know, 10 different people could put in 10 different sets of information, get slightly different outcomes, so it's somewhat subjective. Also, it should not be used to make very specific decisions, so it'll help give us an idea of if we do this or we do that long-term, kind of where does that plot us, but it's not to the level of being able to say, you know, we can specifically fund this or not fund this position. So again, with that caveat, that it's useful for trends, but not for that macro level. We'll look at where the model currently stands now and then some different scenarios for how we improve our financial outlook and trajectory. So this is what it would be currently at a constant rate of 72 cents, so assume we adopted a 72-cent rate and didn't change that for the next 10 years. And this is with the entire capital improvement program, the full CIP in there, so assuming we do every single project on the exact year as shown at the full cost. The orange line is the actual fund balance projected, and the blue line is our policy. So as you can see, if we did every single project that's potentially on the books and didn't change anything else around FY '29 or so, we would drop below our policy level, which we would not want to do, would not suggest, but then eventually FY '31 or so would actually go into the negative, which we absolutely would not do. So, you know, we wouldn't let this happen. In the out-years, as each come up, we would take the steps necessary to avoid actually dropping off like that. So the eventuality this would show would not happen. You know, we don't want to kick the can down the road, but if we had to, we would push projects out or take other measures to make sure that doesn't happen. But again, this just kind of shows if we didn't change anything at all, what 72 cents would do. But we have various levers that we can move to adjust that, so one is tax rate. So then this graph shows if we did the full CIP, didn't change a thing about that, did every project at the full cost on time, and didn't do anything else, then what would be the tax rates each year required to keep us within our policy levels? So for the next two years, 75 cents would keep us there. 28, we would need to go to 78, and then 29 and after would need to go to 90 cents to stay there. Again, can't emphasize enough, this is just a projection and assumption. We do not propose that. While 90 cents is not the highest rate we've ever had, that's a huge increase, and I would like to still be employed here next year, so we're not proposing that. But again, to just show you the various levers, how hard you would have to pull them if the only thing you controlled was tax rate to change that trajectory. Then last year, the board approved data center project, so another is looking at the natural growth of economic development projects. So we put in a model for that one specific project since it's by far the largest revenue generator we could potentially have. This is showing our county estimates, which were more conservative than the applicant's estimates. We think they're pretty accurate. So if it happened as planned, then the current rate would work for this year to keep us above policy. Then 27 and beyond, it would require around 75 cents to stay above policy. But again, this is just illustrative of how a project could change our trajectory. We can't rely on this. While the applicant is still pursuing it, they're talking to the market, they're talking to users, they're advancing the plans, it's out of our control when or how they advance the project. It could start next year, it could never happen. So until it's actually under construction, we can't bet on this, but again, to show how economic development projects could also change our trajectory. And lastly, the other lever that we control is the CIP itself. Operationally, we're in very good shape. It's really those big CIP projects on both school and county side that cause that big dip in the future. So, you know, we control which ones we do. So we looked at what projects will we need to eliminate or delay to, again, keep our fund balance above that policy. So just like tax rate, this is not a proposal we would actually suggest to you. Gutting the CIP to this level would just create more problems and more issues down the road that we would not want, but gives you an idea of what level of cuts or delays would be required. Some of those things are nice-to-have projects. You know, we don't have to expand Turner Park, we don't have to expand Fighting Creek Park. You know, the community would like those things. We don't have to have a second community center. But many of these things in the CIP are not nice-to-haves. Their roofs, their HVAC systems, it's cybersecurity, it's police equipment, so much of it we can't delay and defer. So collectively, just wanted to give both the boards and the public kind of a eye to some of the modeling we do and some of the hard decisions we'll have to make going forward. So what does this tell us? Simply, again, you can't put too much into it because they're, they're big, big projections, and we also, the gray area is also to show the degree of uncertainty. So we show that, that if you're a very optimistic person, then you might take the very top of that gray path and say, we actually wouldn't have to raise taxes or cut so many things. Things are going to be great, and it's going to be up there. Maybe you're more pessimistic, so you take that bottom of the gray and say, actually, even if we do these things we're looking at here, we still have hard work and things before us. So very big degree of uncertainty, but it just gives us a very general direction. So again, what do we take away from this? I think the one simple thing is just that our current 10-year CIP is not affordable without changes. So what can we change? You know, one, it's going to take multiple years of work. This isn't something we're going to solve in this workshop today. It's not something we're going to solve in FY '26 budget or CIP. We need to keep working at it year by year. So again, it's, the numbers in that are huge numbers, so it takes a while to shift that curve, which we're working on and we're making progress towards. But I think it'll likely take a mix of all the things we just showed. It'll take a combination of increasing revenues, whether that be through tax rates, additional tax sources, whether that is from economic development and other projects coming online that bring commercial development to get us closer to that 85-15 rate. It'll require some of the projects, we will have to spread them out. We can't do every single project as soon as we might like, so deciding which ones do we do, which years, reducing costs, looking at value engineering, or how do we take some of those things and maybe do them at a lower price, spread that out. And then also seeking grant funding. We, in the past year, added the full-time grants coordinator position, so looking for what are the opportunities to have, you know, bring in outside funding to help offset some of this. So again, just wanted to share that for both boards to understand the challenge before us and that, you know, again, for the next few years, we are and will remain in excellent financial shape, but as some of those big CIP projects come on, you know, we really need to roll our sleeves up and do work every single budget year to make sure we're continuously riding that curve and making sure we're within our excellent financial standing. That is all I have on that.
Any questions on that?
Ms. Chairman. Brett, what assumption did you make in the models you showed us for real estate, change in real estate assessment?
In the, like, what assumptions are we making on annual growth towards that? Mr. Voe, so. Yeah, Thomas can share some of those again. That's, that's just one of literally dozens of different individual inputs that all feed into it, obviously an important one, but I believe Mr. Voe could share exactly what we're modeling currently for real estate growth.
The last budget cycle, we projected 3%, and it turned out to be 8.
Yep.
And I'm just curious, what, what does your crystal ball tell you for the next, this budget cycle, next, next, what are you basing it on?
Hello? Okay. In working with Jamie Timberlake, the Commissioner of Revenue, who oversees assessment, long-term in the out-years, we're looking at a 3% to 3.5% growth on a calendar year basis, and then add on a new construction value that will make the 3% to 3.5% slightly larger on a year-to-year tax basis.
Okay, what, the, the model for the coming year, what percentage are you using?
The...
Or would you advise we use?
Sure. I would have to look that up. I'm not...
We, we, we stayed at three and we get eight, and that constrains us in terms of our thinking. I don't want to spend money anticipating some that we would continue at that percentage, but we consistently are performing better than the, than the model, conservative model numbers that we're using.
That, that's correct, yeah. Our, our numbers are, have proven so far fairly conservative. When we get the actual data, then we update it, so when we have an 8% increase, then we update them all to show that for that year, but then the accompanying year, the next year, we're back to our admittedly conservative 3% or 3.5%. So again, back to one of the early points, that 10 different people could put in 10 different assumptions into that.
I know, and looking at the numbers from the Home Builders Association, they're, they're forecasting five. And in light of this, our housing supply in Palatine, I would, I would suspect it might be even a touch higher than that.
Yeah. And that's, that's one of the good things about the model is it's not, none of this is set in stone. It's not, you know, it's a living document, so we can certainly model different things. So if somebody wanted to see, okay, you know, understand Brett and team, you guys are conservative at 3%, 3.5%, I'd like to see what happens if it's five. We can very easily change those parameters and model different scenarios.
Do you want to flush that out, Tiva?
Yes, my apologies for the delay. For this current year, we projected in the forecast an 8% increase. And when you take into account new construction for the out-years, I'll list a few out. The following year, 6%, 4.5%, 4.4%, and it kind of drops off because we, we slightly decrease new construction each year. Yes. And those are on a fiscal year basis. Thank you.
Additional questions before we move on to the public schools budget?
Thank you. We'll start by, we always start our presentations with aligning to our strategic plan, and our budget obviously is aligned to our four goals of our strategic plan. We also have academic highlights. I think that one of the, I know that one of the things... I think that one of the, I know that one of the things that Palatine is known for is their schools and the product, the student products that we produce. We can see that we have a 97, almost 97% graduation index and 2.5% dropout. That is extremely, extremely good for Virginia. Obviously, we're always striving for 100%. We have a lot of ongoing programs, whether it's the Advanced College Academy, other advanced placement type course offerings, CTE, National Board Certified Teachers, that's the highest certificate, you know, certification that teachers can get. We have currently nine teachers. We work internally. We have 10 teachers that our other teachers are working with as they go through that National Board process. And like I say, that is, it's a very strenuous process, but it is the outcome of what teachers learn through that about their practice is amazing. And so we're very proud of the work that are, it's teachers supporting teachers through this process at this point. Whereas before, we were, we were paying for, to work with VCU to do that, and we have internalized that. And we recognized one of our new national boards last week. And we also continue with our STEM education. We had our STEM expo last week with incredible turnouts from our community. And despite all our accolades, we're always striving for more, more offerings for our students, more diversity in those offerings, and also higher levels. And so, you know, this year, we were required by the state of Virginia to do the Virginia Literacy Act. And so that has completely transformed our elementary language arts curriculum, as well as our supports for our students with disabilities and other Tier 2 and Tier 3 support of our students. Next year, we know we are facing addition, new standards in math and English. I should say, that was this year. Next year, we actually have them in science, social studies, and computer science, which computer science is not just computer science, it's computer science embedded across the grade levels beginning in elementary school. You know, we also have added new courses that are in the program offering for, students are choosing now for next year. Whether that's the adapted music peer, I don't know if any of you saw the presentation at our last board meeting where we had the adapted PE, where our general ed students are working with our, our students with disabilities and, and being able to have collaborative classrooms with the, with our students that are in the community-based instruction classrooms. You know, we're also offering HVAC for next year, as well as other dual enrollment. We've not offered that dual enrollment credits in our career and workforce development. And so that is one of the new offerings for our students for next year as well. We have turf management and entertainment and design tech. And then also, we have, the school system has been instrumental in supporting the Dolly Parton, actually, in, starting the whole process of getting the Dolly Parton in Imagination Library. And if you're not familiar with that, that's a program that our education foundation has taken on to help support and that students, I mean, children from zero years, so infants through five, would get a free book mailed to their home every month for that five-year period. So it's really working at putting libraries in all of our homes for all of our children and really trying to be a community that focuses on reading and, you know, literacy and understanding. And so that was, that was really spearheaded by our specialists here. So that's just some of the things to kind of show you what we, what we strive for, what we have done and what we continue to strive for. You know, as a, as a school division, you'll see by these next slides, that Palatine does pay comparatively a lion's share of the education of our students. Goochlin obviously pays more. This is based on the local composite index. And Henrico pays slightly more. But as, we're, we're in the number three place. But on the same token, you'll see where the same, you know, Palatine and the other two school divisions are getting less state money, again, tied to the local composite index. And in sales tax, we tend to have a low in, level of funding from the income tax as compared to, on a per student basis, you know, which also impacts Palatine and the taxpayers here. And then again, for federal funds, so things that come through to support federal grants, we are, we are the actual lowest, well, I should, yeah, we, well, I guess Amelia's a few, a few thousands lower than we are, but, you know. So you see where the lion's share of the education of our students in Palatine does fall on our taxpayers. Just want to acknowledge that. And with that though, we also see that Palatine invests the least in our per pupil. We have the lowest per pupil of any of, of these particular divisions, which are either close proximity or similar in demographics. When it comes to our FY26 proposed annual financial plan, you will see the, the increase of $991,830 when we look at the revenues of what we expect coming in from the, you know, whether it be the local county transfers or, or other local services. And again, we've got our state resources and state sales taxes that we get, as well as some federal resources. And that, that mostly is tied to things like our, our JRTC program. And then when we look at our federal resources, we have some additional funds coming in there as well, which is an additional about $38,000. So you notice our grant funding is about 1.66 million. And then the other, others are local resources, state resources, federal resources, you know, and total food service. We tend to keep food service separate because all that money is always separate and, and things that we do with any additional funding that we have there. There's required use of that funds for improving like the cafeterias, the, their equipment, things like that. It's not, not for the school building, but for the, the, the serving of the food. So our total revenues you see are 64,100, I'm sorry, 64,194,195. This is just a different picture of the same thing. Some people like pie graphs, others like charts. This is just the pie graph of it. And then we get into expenditures, and that's where you see the increases. I would like to say that when we talk about increases and things for our staff, such as the 3% salary increase, we have about four times the number of employees as the county does. So when we do things, it's a, it is bigger just because of our staff. Most of our staff are in the instructional area, which is what you would expect. And, and so listed here are the instructional, the administrative, attendance and health, you know, we're required to do things and report things to, be it the State Department or the Health Department. And we have nurses in our buildings and we have attendance clerks, as well as our administrators do attendance work every day. We also have transportation costs. Transportation costs go from the routine transportation from house to school and back, as well as those students who are in a private day placement that is supported by, that they're, by the school system, you know, through the CSA. There's transportation provided there. It's not for privately, like stu, like parents place their child in a private school, like Blessed Sacrament, we're not providing transportation. You know, it's, it's only for those students that are our students that are in a private day placement. And so, you know, we have a, our costs are, are high for transportation from the standpoint of, we do a lot of door-to-door because we are rural community, and I don't think that's different from any other rural community. By the time they're in middle school and high school, we're working on neighborhood stops where we have neighborhoods, but we have limited neighborhoods as compared to the rural routes. We also have operations and maintenance and technology costs. I think like you all, there's, that, that's something that's a constant with the changes that, what is needed there for cybersecurity and, and keeping up with what's really happening in the world outside of education. There you see the total ends up being an increase of 3.55 million. We do have, again, our grant funds with the slight increase coming based on, on numbers of, of students that we have that are, that those, each one of the grants pertains to. And then food service, which ends up being a total of 66.75 million, which is a 3.5 million in difference from last year to this year. So, you know, that, you will see that the deficit there is 2.558 million. Again, just if people like pie charts, we know a lot of people prefer a picture over, over numbers, so it helps explain where the money goes, where in our expenditures. You know, in our, our request, initial request for 2026, you know, that's the 1.558 million is, you know, a benefits coordinator, two years, well, three years ago, we eliminated a position from finance and a position from HR. Through that transition, a person went from finance to HR and was able to do the benefits piece in the HR department, and that's, that's a, something we're losing now. And so the, you know, we know that also with our VRS program, as more new teachers come in, they're on the hybrid plan, and there's a lot more involved in the payroll processing each month, to be sure that we're paying people correctly, we're counting for their benefits correctly, you know, because there's, there's now more short-term disability for, and long-term disability that's built into this, into the VRS process for our, for those The additional counselors, that is something that we had added because each year, they, the General Assembly, they talk about reducing the ratio of 1 to 325 students. That did not come to fruition, and so that was money that would have, would come, would have come out anyway, just because it was, we were planning on it because of things that have been happening in the General Assembly. And so just wanted to justify why that was there and why we've cut that. Additional clinic assistant to help out at the high school with the number of students, the, a student services program manager. There is a lot of work involved where we have had grant-supported position part-time to help with attendance and some of our family issues, to try to make sure we're getting kids back into school. That continues to be a struggle, but we also know we're losing the grant that we've had to support the half, the part-time position. And then technology, computer tech position, and a reading specialist. The reading specialist is required by the standards of quality, and that's based on the number of students and, that we have. And so we don't have an option but to fill that position. And if we were to eliminate it, we would also lose the, the funding we get from the state for it. So, and I didn't, I noticed I skipped over the alternative ed program. I am so sorry with the behaviors that we've, that we've had post-COVID in schools. Really, as we try to determine how we can best control behaviors of students and help them to learn the appropriate behaviors, we created a program that would allow support in each one of our five schools to have a, a teacher with behavior background knowledge, an instructional assistant, and then two behavioral specialists to go between the five buildings. This, the impact on this is more than the impact for the students who are struggling with appropriate behavior, because when students aren't behaving, there's an impact on all of the other students in the classroom, and there's an impact on teacher retention. Because it's, you know, you can imagine how frustrating it is in a classroom of 20-some kids and one, you know, we, there are kids who will destroy a classroom, literally tear it apart from one end to the other, and we have to take kids out of classrooms. And there's, you know, we need, we need a process and a place as to how we can pull those children out, help them. And I do think there's pieces of it to help parents learn sometimes how to better parent. You know, that, that's an, an absence area we have, I feel in our county, is that we don't provide parenting skills. And some parents just need that, to help them get where they need to be. But that's, that's a big part of the amount of money we were asking for, because that's $660,000. So, I'm sorry, it's almost $700,000. So just to try to help explain what that is, I know it says alternative program, maybe we would have been better off to have labeled it as a behavior improvement plan, but that is what it is. We, we also, some of the things we wanted to do that were more contract and program improvements is, we have two facilities, apprentices that are 10-month, and the reality is so much work happens in the summer, that while we've, we've limped through with paying them additional in the summer, that, you know, that it, they really should be 12-month employees. We've increased the, we, we have a one assistive technology teacher, and right now she is 10 months, but really she needs to be 11 months to be able to prepare for the school year as new students, you know, she, it's a constant change as kids are identified with needs or new students come into the system. But just extending that contract so that she can do her work when she needs to do it and not, not be maybe volunteering some time. Our CTE coordinator, while we would like to increase it from a part-time position to a full-time position, we do currently have a part-time 0.8 person in, in the position. This would be dependent on, you know, her decision about staying on and being able to do, whether she can do a full position or not, a full 1.0, if that makes sense. We are looking to increase the middle schools math coach to give additional time outside the normal contract days, 200 days is a normal teacher contract. There's things that need to be done in the, in the summer with curriculum development and helping to prepare professional development for the math teachers, as well as providing professional development sessions. And increase school admin salaries. As I said previously, on when we did this study, we put a cap that no one's salary could go up above more than 7%. Our administrators, our AP, assistant principals, principals and so on, were still below the midpoint of the region. And so, you know, we were looking this year to, to bring them up to that, since we weren't able to meet the goal, the, the original goal of the salary study. As well as increase our instructional specialist. When we did the salary increases, they are based on the comparisons. Our 12-month teachers are making more money than our 12-month instructional specialist who are doing all the curriculum design work through, throughout the year, as well as professional development. Program improvements, you know, we were, we were hoping for, you know, to, as a recruitment and retention- and retention, that we would do away without a county staff tuition so our student, our, our staff can bring their children to Powhatan schools. It is a reduced rate tuition. It makes it so that their children are on the same schedule they are as if you live in Chesterfield or Cumberland, sometimes there are differences in the school calendar. Not a whole lot of money, but just trying to continue to, how do we maintain the teachers when we're not paying the rates that are nearby localities like Chesterfield and Henrico are paying? Also covering the cost of licensure renewal, that's about $2,000 a year. Licenses are only renewed for teachers now every 10 years, so it's a minimal amount. Also wanted to add a psychologist intern. That would be a full-time position for a minimal amount when we think of under $20,000 to get a full-time psychologist that has to work under one of our licensed psychologists, but can do a full-time work, you know, schedule. So, just looking at for a creative way to increase our mental health support in our, for our students. There's been requests for the last several years to add a girls' soccer team at the middle school. Currently that is a co-ed team. And so, the girls feel at a disadvantage for not being able to, to get the competitive play that the boys can get for then going into high school and VHSL. We have cybersecurity, infrastructure upgrades that must be done. And then there's a, a little bit of money in what, that was left over, so that's an unassigned fund at the moment. So, those, you know, you can see the top half totals up to just under 200,000 and the lower half just under 125,000. Happy to try to answer any questions you may have.
Dr. Tiggin, if I may, can we circle back to the alternative ed?
Yes.
I know you, you provided a illustration of what, what the classroom may look like after, after COVID. What, when, when you have a troubled student like that, that disrupts class and as you mentioned, may tear things apart, what is the staff commitment to a student like that beyond the classroom? Is there?
Well, you know, if, you mean, you want me to kind of walk you through a scenario of something happens in a classroom and what the adults may be doing and maybe that'll help?
I'm curious, what, what happens and then beyond that, if, if there's additional needs for the student, is there?
There, we, we do go through a process where they're, you know, in the, in the moment, it's about keeping that child safe as well as keep, keeping all of the other children safe. But then the after-the-fact are conversations and, and conferences with parents, you know, and definitely talking about what's happening and what consequences can be. But there's also in there is a process of staff looking for what are the antecedents to the behavior and talking through that as far as if this is what hap, if we're seeing patterns of what's happening before the behaviors are being exhibited, then how do we, what is the behavior plan that we put in place and we're putting in, you know, the plans for that? So they're trying to be proactive, moving forward by using, you know, a data-driven method. Sometimes that's effective, sometimes it's not. If it's, if it's not being affected, effective, then there are times when then students end up being out of school for a day or two. There's very limited amount of out-of-school time that we can give, you know, elementary-age students because, you know, it's, it's in the code of Virginia. And then intent isn't, you know, it's usually that the out-of-school is coming, out-of-school suspension is coming when there, when there's no other resources at the moment within the school. And sometimes we have to put other things in place, other, other personnel, like many times there could, well, I don't want to say many times, but sometimes there could be an instructional assistant assigned to the school, to the student so that, you know, in the classroom, they're helping them to try to avoid the, whatever the antecedent was as well as teach them. Sometimes, you know, teachers get hit, teachers get hurt, oftentimes that can lead to a discipline. But the intent is to help them get better and I feel that right now, despite what we're trying to do, it's not helping because we don't have the resources, we don't have extra instructional assistance. We'll use a sub for the day to try to find out if that works, you know, if we can have, if we can have a couple of days of a sub, are we seeing different behaviors and able to control the behaviors? But it is, it is a process. And, you know, I will say sometimes in the process, parents may request an evaluation for special education services and, you know, what can happen while it may not be necessarily initially seen as something that is, something that requires special education services, over time, the student may fall behind, that then you're seeing a difference between the student's ability and their performance. And then that's when things trigger sometimes to be identified as special education because it's looking for that discrepancy. And so then, you know, then that can go down that pathway as well. But I mean, the intent is the same, whether they're a general ed student or a special ed student, is really trying to identify the antecedents to behaviors and then what can we do to help deal with those, prevent those antecedents as much as possible and help a child learn to cope through it because those will still, you know, in a, over time, those are likely still to happen while trying to keep that child in school and learning and all the other children in the classroom feeling safe and learning. Sometimes we get, you know, complaints from other parents about the concerns of their child having anxiety in the, in the, in the classroom because of what's happening.
Is there a significant number of students that's?
It, this, it's not the volume as much as the, of students. There's probably, you know, at most the ones that we're thinking of, it could be anywhere from five to 10 in a school maybe, is what I would, you know, estimate it as. You know, and the point is we're, that's the number that are at the more significant impact stage and the point would be to keep more students from even getting to that phase because by that phase, there's, there's things with that child and that family that, you know, relationships that are harmed when things aren't going well in school and, you know. So, I hope that answers your question.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Morset.
Okay. I think my question is, is this a all-around, every school system, every grade level? Or is this being identified in certain classrooms?
It, it, right now, we, we see behavior issues across the board, elementary, middle and high. And so that's why the proposal was to put, you know, one, one program, not a behavioral specialist, but someone with behavioral knowledge and, and an instructional assistant. So there's always supervision of the child if a teacher's trying to take one child into a classroom and another child is staying, you know, in a, in the, in the behavior modification room, you know? So, but I would, it, right now, it is not one or the other. The hope is that over time, your work at the elementary level would be the impact that you need to prevent the need to have that at middle and high school. That's the hope, whether, you know, hope, as some people say, hope is not a strategy, so, you know, you have to plan accordingly, but right now, we have students at all three school levels.
So, I'm just confused. On all schools. When I was in school, if there were kids with disabilities, their butts were so hooked, whether it be a week, two weeks or permanently.
You can't do that anymore.
There's a disconnect here between parents and schools, children, and in my opinion, bringing in mental health, people to help with these situations. Are you seeing that some of this lack of attention or disruptive behavior, is any of it coming from students that don't have internet?
I, I don't have any data on, on the.
A huge part of District 5 and District 4 are without internet, whereas District 1, 2 and 3.
Correct.
Have internet. I know that whenever Hogan was here and they were teaching, you know, these laptops and tablets and all, I would have to take my grandson to church where school bus was because it was way around that in the area. The school bus was a joke, there was literally nowhere to get in there. The child would do the work, have it completed, get the cotton to send it, teach remember that, and he wasn't worried. So I, I can't help but feel like Powhatan is home, we need to figure out how to get internet to District 4 and District 5. It's got to be affecting these kids, especially when I learned that a new ban was put into effect last year and over the books. So these kids without internet had to be suffering more so than the ones with internet without having access to the schools.
I will say though, I'm not, I don't know the role that, I, I, the role of learning, I understand, because if there's frustration in learning, I think that's part of the, what's the antecedent? Is it, that triggers it, that triggers behavior, behavioral responses? But we have a number of preschool kids that come in with really significant behavior issues and so I would hope they weren't on internet wherever they live, but maybe it's because they are on internet, you know?
You never know.
But, but some serious things from some very little kids when you figure three- and four-year-olds. And so, but I, we can, I can try to find data for you on our, you know, we can look at our kids and what district they live in, we'll see if we can pull that data.
I would appreciate that, because I have a right one to say to Firefly.
Ms. Jim?
Ms. Powers, go ahead.
Dr. Tiggin, I, I need a little clarification on what's going to happen in this alternative education classroom. I understand the behavioral modification, once the student is there and calmed down, they're still, are they, are they being taught their basic subjects that they are also?
Yes. The, the intent is to deal with the behavior and then be able to get the child back into the school, but, but the learning has, the intent is not, they might lose a couple of days of learning if they need to be in there for a while, but part of it would be that they can get their instruction in that classroom along with the behavior.
Okay, but the goal is to modify that behavior, fill the gaps if it's a two-or-day, two-or-day, two-or-three-day thing, but then send them back to their original classroom?
It, and it will depend, I mean, that is student-dependent and what they, what they see as the improvement in the behavior and whether they can go back to classroom, to the classroom. And sometimes, you know, the teacher might be able to take them in, like if, if I'm a student that has behavior issues and, well, I really dislike math, then don't put me back in first time into a math lesson. Let me go back in, maybe, maybe it's to art class and can I behave there? And then can I get in and, and be there for, for my reading and, and art? You know, I think for, it's, it's a personalized, based on what that child needs, but the intent is that they are going to be with their peers, they stay in their school because they've got to learn to get along and, and behave in that environment. And so it could be short-term for some kids, it could be a longer term for others depending on the issues.
You shared with me, and I think I shared with my colleagues, you broke down the incidence of these behavioral events that were disrupting a classroom by school and, and I don't, I haven't memorized the numbers, but some of the schools, it was over 1,000 instant instances with, and look at the numbers, evidently there are students that are repeating.
There are some that are, there are absolutely some that are repeating. Because if you put them out and they come back, nothing has changed.
It's changed. So what the number suggested to me was just to validate what you've been saying, it's a serious problem and it's a serious problem in all the schools.
And it's not just, it's, and it's not just Powhatan. This is something that all school districts are, are struggling with at this point in time, you know? So we're not, we're not on an island, but I don't know that anyone has, you know, has the perfect solution or we would've, someone would've made money off of it by now, but we're trying to figure out what we can do for our families and our kids.
One last question. Is there a correlation in your mind between CSA placements, special ed placements out of the school system where we're, we're taking, where they're, they're getting their private education, we're not, right? State-funded, 80, 20, some county participation in that significantly. Would this program reduce the CSA placements in your view?
I, I think, I think that there's, there's potential, especially for when it's behavior-related, but could, you know, over time, I would say yes. I, I can't give you an, you know, how, what percentage of the kids, but yes.
How many students do we have in a school system now that are special ed placed outside the county? They're getting private education.
Hmm.
She's not in here.
She's not here. I'm thinking it's.
A dozen?
Uh, no, I'm thinking it's like 38.
And each of those students, when we, when we send them out, the state provides some of the money to, to cover that, but the other is, comes out of the county. Is it 80, 20 Brett? It's 50,000 bucks, whoever pays for it's a lot of money. I'm, I'm just hopeful that the, the alternative program would allow us to reduce the amount of, the number of students that we have to push out into private education, which costs a ton of money. That money doesn't, I understand, does not come out of your budget, the budget you're proposing, but comes out of our social services budget.
It does.
We're paying for that. It's in our, in our, in our, in the numbers that Brett has given us. So if there's a correlation, if we could reduce that from, we said 30 students, over time with this program, it seems like it would pay for itself or make a heck of a contribution to paying for itself.
It would not, it not only would bring money back, it would provide better citizens coming out because we, you know, if you keep, some, some kids who keep making bad choices and don't understand why, sometimes why they behave the way they do, because, you know, some kids, it's not like they get up and say, I want to be, I want to be a kid that's going to misbehave today. You know, they don't, they have to understand themselves as well. But, you know, if you don't, if you don't help them, then those are the kids that we're seeing making some really bad choices that are causing, you know, more issues for them and their families. You know, I think about, you know, when they get to be high school age and make bad choices, there's big consequences to that.
Yeah, and to answer.
And it may be that we, that they get sus, long-term suspended, that they get expelled, but there's still, that impacts our community.
Right.
In a way that is, that is, has a negative financial impact.
Yeah, Bill, just to give you a, an example, I was at Pocahontas Elementary on a, to do a ministry thing and we walked into the, to the entrance and there's five teachers, five people, adults, I'm going to use wrong terminology, hurting this child that was obviously having some sort of a meltdown. And it took five adults to minister to this young child. Multiply that across thousands of instances in the schools and it becomes hugely disruptive to education, not only disruptive, not only bad for the kid that's having the meltdown, but the other 18 kids back in the classroom. So, I, I understand, I understand.
Did you have a?
I, I was just going to clarify, the, the children that go through the Children's Services Act, which is where some of these students go into CSA, Children's Services Act, the local average percentage is 43% of the cost. Depends on what the service is, if you're in a private. Depends on what the service is, if you're in a private day placement versus an actual move home, or those are higher percentages to local, so it's an average of forty-three percent local match, and then the rest comes from the state. Yes.
So I mean, it's costing us, costing us in the taxpayer.
The number's twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine kids.
This year, it's twenty-nine, currently.
Ms. Chairman.
Ms. Kenny.
So I'm kind of with Denise on, I'm sort of old-school, and I'm wondering why schools are getting into the counseling business when, to me, that, that responsibility should be on the parents. So the way I look at it from, from my perspective is if we got to raise taxes, you're asking parents that don't have problems with their kids, or kids, have kids in private school, or don't have kids at all, to pay for behavior modification is basically what we're talking about. And we're talking, well, we hope it works, so I guess my more, so anytime there's an expense, to me, there's got to be a justification for it. So you're asking for almost seven hundred thousand dollars for ten teachers. Okay, so my first question in regard to justification, are other schools doing this?
Other schools, like other divisions?
Yeah, so is Goochland, is Goochland doing alternative education programs, just like what you're proposing?
Most of them are, most of them are.
So it, does it work or does it not work?
I, their programs aren't set up the same way, I, and I don't know, I can certainly check. I know that in Henrico, they have a behavior program set up that, that is effective, so does Chesterfield, with the goal being to get kids back into their regular classrooms, not, not pulling them out and keeping them out and isolated, but preparing them to go back in. And the impact is greater, though, than those children, because they're impacting the education of other students in that classroom, in the, in the school. There is an impact. I wish there wasn't, but there is.
So why is there no discipline, then? So if a kid, if you, it's like, you know, it used to be three strikes and you're out. When you got arrested three times, you're out. Okay, if you got a repeat offender, and he's in the program, but he keeps repeating it, then, then what are the consequences? I mean, they're just going to keep being disruptive until, you've got, you've got to put some responsibility on the parents, you know, to take care of this. So, so I'll backtrack, let's just say, you can give me statistics that it does work. So why do we have to go all-in? Do we know, we don't know if it's going to work in Powhatan, so rather than hire ten, hire two and start at the elementary school. If it works there, then we can talk about funding it for the other grades down the road. But we, I'm not hearing anywhere where we don't even know if it's going to work. It's a program that might work, but, but let's try it. It's like, you know, when I worked in IT, you test it in the lab first, and then you put it out on a small scale to make sure in the real world, it's not going to blow everything up, and then once that's worked out, then you implement it, you know, company-wide. So I, I guess, is it possible to just start it on a small scale and then see if it works and go on from there?
I mean, obviously you could, I guess, why would you want families in one district to have maybe a solution, you know, to have what's believed to be a solution to the problem, and you're not providing it to the others?
Well, because you don't know if it's going to work or not. So, so if you can show that it works at this level, then that gives the other families hope, like, hey, yeah, I really want to get involved in this, and maybe in the meantime, they can be talking to their kids, you know, about if there are consequences for behaviors, that may change them altogether. I mean, it's much harder if you hire all ten, and then it doesn't work, it's really hard to pull or get rid of those people once we're already paying them, than if you just start small, see if it works, and then move on from there.
I, I would say it's, I would disagree with it's hard, I mean, if you, if you hire the, you know, the ten people, and then you decide that if, if for some reason it isn't as effective, that we, we believe based on our research it will be, is that those are, those are staff that'll be absorbed into vacancies the following year. We have, you know, I know it's a news alert here, but there's a shortage of teachers, and so we're hiring teachers every year, so it's, to me, that isn't, you know, and if worst case, then, you know, we, we have a policy that tells us how we have to back up our numbers of staff. Well, not, not something you normally want to do, that was, you know, that's what you do. If something isn't working, or you no longer have a program, you have to eliminate the teacher that, if, you know, if it's a special, let me just say, if we were teaching German and there were only seven kids that wanted German, we would say, we would have to tell the German teacher, we're sorry, we no longer can sustain a program.
Well, so you.
And we do that.
You bring teachers back, but, but in the town hall I had last night, people keep asking the same question, why do we keep hiring more and more staff when we have less students? We have two hundred less students than we did a few years ago, but, but you guys, you guys keep putting more and more, like, we got a benefits quarter now and other clinical assistance, but you have less students in the schools. So why are we adding more staff?
Well, if.
You got to remember, it's semantics.
I know.
When taxes got to go up and we got to give you more money, our emails and phone calls blow up, not y'all's. So I need to go back to my voters and justify these expenses, and, and, you know, we brought it up at the town hall, they're saying, well, why can't they just hire a couple now, try it out, see if it works, and then if it works, we can fund the rest.
The, I guess that, you know, when you want to say the, the reduction in students, when you reduce students over the grade levels that we have, it's, it's insignificant over the levels, that it doesn't, you know, it doesn't warrant that you're eliminating a teacher. And if we, if it was that we were eliminating a teacher for any reason, because staffing at a certain grade level, especially elementary, you know, you don't, you don't, you don't have choices for them. When they come in, they, whatever grade level they're in, you have to put them in, and if they don't fall out in the right levels, you're still having the same number of teachers. We have had a decrease in, in some enrollment, because we've also saved, you know, from my perspective, we've saved the county money, because we have said, if you don't live in Powhatan, you don't get to lie and tell untruths that you live, that you live here and your kids get to go to our schools. No, if you don't live in Powhatan, you go to your, your county schools and get their services. So, you know, I, I look at it as we've saved sixty students who are county residents are no longer paying the local share of, because we've done our due diligence of following up with our lives with.
And I get that, but it's hard to say, well, you're saving the county money when in four years, your ask from us has gone up thirteen million dollars.
And again, we have, I'll get more information, but, you know, things that we do do that you all do on the county side, you know, when we've got, when you're four times as big, you have four times the expense, so, but we'll, we'll get you information.
Mr. Kenny, I just, in, and I don't look at it, I'm, I'm old-school like you and Ms. Morris that, trust me, this has been a hard transition. However, what I'm looking at more for our alternative program is I'm not worried, I want that other child that's being pulled out to get back to work, but when you have to, if you're, let's say you're teaching twenty kids in an elementary school, and you're in the middle of a lesson, and somebody goes and has a problem and starts maybe throwing furniture and things, how long, how much learning loss have we had for those other nineteen kids? And the, the alternative program is my, that's my issue I'm worried about. As a parent, I had a, my daughter, she was, you know, had some troubled kids in her, and I, she would tell me these stories, and I'm like, how did you learn anything today? When, you know, so-and-so was throwing the furniture and doing this, and there was no place, you know, it was either the office or home. And sometimes home is not the best, and I agree, it's parents' responsibility. However, I mean, you, I don't know if you watched the General Assembly, all the things that they were asking, so, I mean, they were asking schools to do a lot of things. We're not just teaching, you know, anymore, it's everything else involved, too. And we have to look at, you know, I mean, I know teachers that have washed kids clothes for them, because they don't have any clothes. And that's, you have to look at what's going on at home. So that's, I'm more worried about the other kids in the class first, and then we can focus on getting the other kids straight, but getting them out of that class, but they can still get assignments.
Right, but there's still got to be consequences for adverse behavior, because if, if, if you're just switching them from, you know, well, you're going to let them say what class they get to go, like, well, I misbehaved, so I want to go to our class. They're going to work the system, you know, they're going to do that.
Well, yeah, but I think the behavioral specialists are the ones that are going to know where to work the system.
Start small, so you can justify the expense to make sure that it works, rather than going all-in. I don't see a problem with that. You know, to me, that, that helps, it's like, okay, we know the county's got to come up with a lot of money, we got to raise taxes to pay for some of the CIP projects, okay, we'll show a little bit of good faith, like, you know what, we're willing to meet you halfway and save you guys a little bit of money, we'll hire a couple teachers, make sure this program's going to work, and then maybe we can, as a county, say, you know, maybe instead of giving you seven hundred thousand, we could, I don't know if there's a way to do it, to say, okay, we'll take the seven hundred thousand dollars and we'll just set it aside, we'll give you two now for a couple of teachers, and if it works, then, you know, we could move more money to let you hire more people to do it. Can we do it that way? I don't know, that's, that's a Charlotte question, but to me, it's, and he brought up some great points at the town hall. It's like, when I'm in the corporate world, if you want to file an expense report, you better have the receipts to back it up and the justification as to why you have to spend that money, because we, as board members, have to explain that to the people of this county, when they start calling us and blowing up our email about why we're raising taxes, and why we're giving the school more money, why are we doing that? When semantics, they look at it, and they say, we've got less students to educate, so why do they keep asking, why does the instructional budget keep going up? Those are things that we need to justify to our voters, and if you can do that, then it makes our job easier, and it makes you guys look better, because we can go to say, you know what, we got to raise taxes three, four, or five cents, and these are the reasons why, these are the justifications that we have, and then they're like, oh, okay, well, now we understand. And I think it's a lack of understanding right now, and they look at the numbers and they're like, oh my God, thirteen million dollars in five years, just like they look at your salary and they say, five hundred and forty, five hundred and forty percent increase, why, why is that?
Well, not, don't believe everything you hear, I'm just going to tell you that, but.
But that's just an example, like, you know, people look at that stuff, it's just like when the county wants to, when we want to spend money, they're showing up at the board meetings like, dudes, what are you doing? Why are you, why are you spending this money for this? Then Brett and Charlotte give us the documentation to justify the expense, and they're good. That's all I'm asking, is a good-faith effort to meet us halfway to try to save the county some money, so we can justify that to our voters, try it on a small scale.
And we, we can certainly do that. I do want to clarify, too, though, that there are, there are laws that the legislators have put in place that limit the amount of time for certain students based on age and different criteria, as to they can be sent home with mommy and daddy to try to correct their behavior. You know, so it's not like we can old-school it and just kick them out, we're held to a different level of accountability.
Well, and that may all change, if President Trump abolishes the Department of Education, and then it's all going to fall in the state, things could change big time. But I understand.
Legislators have to change it, it's legislation.
I mean, I'm with you on that, and it's not like, I don't have complicity for the kids, because I do, I mean, you know, you want the kid to get a good education, but also they want to try something and then it doesn't work, or they game the system and...
We can absolutely pick one school and, and start there, and, you know.
So if, if you can meet me there, then let me ask you one more question. Which grade level, because I don't know, I'm, I'm not a school administrator, is it hardest, hardest to implement this? So is it easier to suspend somebody or expel them at the high school level than it is at the elementary?
It's kind of, it depends on what, it's kind of a loaded question in different ways, but I will say that the behavior.
Well, let's say they exhibit the same behavior, they tear up a class. So at the high school level, you're going to suspend them for five days or two weeks?
It's easier to suspend at the high school level for that, for that type of behavior than it is at, at the elementary.
Just my humble recommendation is implement it where it's harder to do the discipline, start it there.
Well, I, I would also say it's better.
But I, you guys should make that decision, not me.
My, my thought would be elementary, just because then you're addressing behavior earlier on, that it, it improves, it gives us a, what you do in one year could improve the next eleven years.
Right, yeah, yep, I totally get that part.
Ms. Chairman, are you done?
Just about.
Oh, I want to interrupt you if you're not done.
Thank you, Dr. Tiggen.
Thank you.
I really appreciate that, and sorry I get a little passionate about stuff, but, you know, I got to justify this to voters and things like that, and, and I'm with Denise, you know, when I was in school and I misbehaved, well, you got spanked.
I was going to say, when we went to, when I went to school, you didn't want, you'd never wanted your parents to find out you got in trouble for anything, because it was twice as bad at home.
Yeah, sending a note home with a report card, and it was all over, but no, I appreciate the dialogue, so thank you.
Ms. Powers.
Yeah, I, I was paddled on more than one occasion in school, I know that would, I know that would come as a surprise to some, but those days, those days have certainly passed. I would, Dr. Tiggen, I would like you to help us understand, we keep hearing two hundred fewer students, and you just, you just kind of went quickly over, well, you have to look at the distribution of where they happen in terms of whether you can reduce the teaching staff, and I think that's important. The other point is, you have fixed costs. I don't care if, if you've got a hundred less students, you still have fixed costs across all those buildings, and you face the same problems that we do, times four in many instances. You're running, I can't imagine what your fuel bills are compared to the county, so you have, you have costs that, that are describing, or at least explaining, some of that thirteen million bucks that you see over four years. And I, you have impressed upon me, and you just said it, but the state puts a great deal of restriction on what you can and can't do relative to disciplining these kids, and I agree with Mr. Kenny a hundred percent. Where are the parents in this? But that's a woulda, coulda, shoulda. I don't know what we can do to get the parents off, off the dime, but I'm not going to wait for them to do it. We, we've got to take some steps, I think, in the schools themselves to address this. I'm very sympathetic to Mr. Kenny's position and support it a hundred percent, and that is to do a pilot. I think each, each time you have a teach, an instructor and an aide, so that's two people, and if you're going to pick one elementary school, then.
I would say three, because you at least have to have a behavioral specialist.
Okay, okay, so instead of, instead of seven hundred, and that's seven hundred thousand dollars, you could probably save five or six hundred thousand there. You've still got a one-point-eight-million-dollar shortfall, we just reduced it for you by six hundred thousand. I still don't have a sense of what you're saying to us about how, how to make up the delta. The only way that you can do that in a personnel-rich environment is to get rid of teachers. I don't want to see that happen. I think that's detrimental to the school system and to the overall health and safety of this county. So where, where does, where does the other, where does the rest of the money come from? And not cut, and not cut teachers.
Well, you know, some, some of it is decisions that, that will be made by, by the board as far as what, what isn't added, what, you know, what is it that we're, we're not adding into, you know, you see, there's things up there, I mean, and we have, we have delayed that strategy, because until we know where we are, if, you can't make good decisions of what you're going to choose to keep or not keep. Does that make sense?
Ms. Chair, if I could maybe add to that, we have, Dr. Tiggen, just kind of piggybacking on what you're saying, we have looked at the things that we proposed and what we could take out and what that would look like, and taking those out, keeping some of these things that we don't want to give up, such as the soccer, that's not on that sheet, but the soccer team and things like that, there's a couple things, the SOQ position, it still leaves us at four hundred and seventy-two thousand or, and some change, as far as a deficit. And so what I've asked some of you guys that I've had personal meetings with is, your, I guess the initial fund is the million and a half. I guess the initial fund is the million and a half above what we asked last year, and I would ask at least for another two million to cover that shortfall, because it comes down to...
Another two million?
No, sorry, up to two million.
Up to...
Well, yeah, if you're willing with two million, I'm good with that. No, another five hundred thousand dollars to get it at two million, so we don't have to do what you're talking about there, and that is start cutting staff positions, which would be largely teachers.
Well, I just wanna make one more point, and this was made clear to me when we were doing the strategic planning effort last year. The Virginia Literacy Act, which our General Assembly imposed, and there's many good things about that in terms of the curriculum that was imposed, but there were twelve positions, as I recall, of which the state said, "Yeah, you have to do twelve to implement the Virginia Literacy Act, but we're only gonna pay for four of them." Oops, so where are you gonna get the rest? And Dr. Tiger's sitting there with, holding her dollar bill in her hand, and said, "This is law, I must do this," and so things get pushed out, like HVAC systems and roofs and things like that. So I'm empathetic to that situation, but I think we really need to internalize the fact that our friends at the General Assembly impose a lot of burden on us locally, that they don't fund, and we have to, we have to meet the, meet the deficit.
Mr. and Mrs. Chair, thank you. We've, I have gone over this a whole lot, speaking with other teachers, other board members, also our superintendent. Again, I'm old-school. If there's a discipline issue, it needs, to me, it should be handled swiftly, quickly, and with the right consequence. Unfortunately, we are living in an age where the reprimand on the school system is much greater than it has been in the past, when school systems have had to enforce discipline. I do like the idea of doing a pilot program. If I would make a suggestion, I agree with Dr. Tiger, I think we should focus on the elementary age, because there we can hopefully curtail a behavior that's starting before it really gets out of control. We do have three schools, elementarys, so we could either try a pilot in each school, or maybe when we discuss this more as the board, and our superintendent giving us this information, looking at the schools that might be having higher rates of disruptive behavior per school. But I would caution us not to eliminate the middle school, because the middle school, we have a lot of difficult students, and sometimes that behavior is compounded even more because of their age and the destruction that they can really do. So maybe if we go back to the table and we look at some other things, I'd like for us to consider focusing on the elementary. Again, we can make a positive difference to them for the next eleven years of their education career, but also not to lose focus on middle school. But it is very frustrating, because that was my answer, is put 'em out of the school, put 'em out. Sometimes that's not the answer, because the law's not gonna let us do that, especially in the elementary level. However, we also have to look at if we do put them out, what environment are they going back into, that they're not getting supervision? So I have spoken to other school board members in other districts that are doing alternative education, and they are just getting their feet wet themselves over the last year or two, but we are hearing positive feedback, that it is working. And I will do some more due diligence and speak with some other counties as well, to find out what numbers and what data we can get back from them. But every school board meeting for the last, I don't know, six to eight months, I've only been doing this, you know, a little over a year, but I've been stressing to our parents, we need parent participation, and we're gonna get that from a lot of our parents, because we have a lot of great families, and some, a lot of our families, I mean, if you get on the Palatine Moms and all these other Facebook pages, they're going out there asking questions, because they really don't know how to parent. So this is where I would love for our social services department to be able to offer more classes, more, so we, as the school division, aren't trying to solve all of the psychiatric behavior issues, parenting issues, that we're able to put some of that back into, you know, the community, churches, organizations, social services, so that we, as the school division, can focus on what our goal is. And our goal is, if you have a classroom of eighteen students, and one is being disruptive, for those other seventeen children to be able to get their education, and for that teacher that is in that classroom not to get to the point where they just don't wanna teach anymore, and they decide to retire because of the behavior. And when we hear the pleas and the concerns from our faculty, a lot of that is behavior, behavior in the classroom, because of course, we, you know, unfortunately, your hands can be tied. But I really feel confident that our superintendent, she's been at this for three years now, going into three years, and, you know, the administration, that's, to me, is the goal, is that the administration can set policies, or, excuse me, we set the policies, but then the administrators follow through on the discipline, and that our faculty, administration, and staff know that that's gonna be, you know, adhered to. But I think it's a great idea, and as a board member, I'm certainly willing to go back to the table and work with our superintendent and see what we can do to help save money there.
Awesome, a lot of good conversation, I appreciate a good constructive conversation. It took us quite a bit to get to the ask, so thank you for that. I know we were eventually getting around to it, so go ahead. If I could please, I just wanna clarify. You have a one point six million dollar shortfall after the additional money from, from the state, and if we were to do the pilot as opposed to the full-blown alternative program, let's say that cuts five hundred out of it, and then you all have gone through an additional austerity discussions, so the gap right now that you're asking us to consider is four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Is that what I heard you say?
Four seventy-two. No, sir, I believe it's four seventy-two and some change.
Okay, excuse me, excuse me.
So I rounded it up to five.
You wanna round, okay, that's, that's fine. So you're looking for four seventy-two, after you've been as austere as you, does that include the reduction to a pilot of the alternative education program? Or did we just cut your four hundred and seventy-two?
No, it does not include any, it does not include the alternative program at all.
So if we cut it, you're not four hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars short. Is that what I hear you saying?
We're more than that, because in the four hundred and seventy-two thousand, it involved the, the things that weren't included, it, there was the SOQ position for the reading specialist, that's part of that four hundred thousand, the cybersecurity needs, which was about sixty-seven thousand, and the soccer that was ten thousand, then there were some other things in there, but the alternative ed was not in there at all. So that would cost, you know, you figure if you've got at most three positions...
Beth, you're confusing the dickens out of me. The one, the one point six shortfall, did it include the alternative program or not?
The one point, I say that, I'm...
I thought it did.
Maybe it did.
It did, and we still were down four seventy-two.
So if you cut it, if you cut it by five hundred thousand, you don't need four seventy-two?
Well, I would also like to mention too, when we're saying cutting, we're, we've got proposed almost seven hundred thousand dollars for the whole division, but if we're going to try and implement this in the elementary, and possibly middle school, we wouldn't be able to, I mean, if you cut that in half, that would be three fifty to try and...
You run from a pilot in one school to a pilot in two or three.
No, actually, when I spoke, I said, "I would love to see it in each elementary school," so, because again, we have three different schools, but, you know, possibly, you know, again, I think we should be able to go back and look at the different schools, see which one we're having the most struggles with, and see if we can, I mean, because the other option there would be too, is having to transport these children. Let's say you have a child, an elementary student that's disruptive at Pocahontas, now we have to provide transportation for that student to travel to Flat Rock, because that's where our pilot program is, right?
Dr. Tiger, if you...
Right, I don't think I would do, I think it would be better for us to have, if we wanted to do the pilot, let's say we pilot elementary and have one for each elementary school.
That, you just added six people. If you piloted one elementary school, that, you said you needed three people. Those three people, from seven hundred thousand to those three people, can you cut five hundred out of the seven hundred and still have three people?
Yes, for the three, the level of the, yes.
Okay, so that five hundred K goes away, Dr. Taylor. Do you still need the four seventy-two?
Yes. I'm getting lost in, like you, I'm getting lost in all these numbers that we're throwing around.
So, so maybe we can make this simple, Brett. So originally, right now, you're recommending the county gives the school, they asked for four, we're gonna give them one point five. If, in discussion with Dr. Taylor, if we said, "Okay, we're gonna give them two million dollars, period," can you do the alternative program pilot with that, with that funding?
That I would have to look to schools, I'm not sure how that would work.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm, I think we're, we're kinda trying to work backwards.
Yeah, that's exactly the question.
Rather, we should work forwards, like, okay, this is what we're gonna give you, if we give you this, can you still do it?
If we give you two million, can you, can you do the pilot alternative program? And still get your reading teacher, and still get your cybersecurity, you can do that?
Yes.
Okay, and so, so Brett, you have, you reach into your drawer and pull out a petty cash and come up with four hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars?
You can make that up, genius. Throw in a couple hundred for yourself.
But can we do that within the three pennies that you're forecasting?
That's the question. It would require us to either cut things on the county side or school cut things elsewhere, so, no, I mean, there's, there's, in the proposed seventy-two cent budget, there's no, no additional, no, no extra, so we would have to, within that, reduce something somewhere, somewhere else, or, you know, additional, each penny on the tax rate is a little over six hundred thousand, so that would equate to, you know, a little less than...
Speaking for myself, having gone over the budget with you, I'm not, I would not support any further cutting at the county level. You, you've used the meat cleaver, so I think we're fine there. So if that four hundred, if that four hundred and some odd thousand dollars is necessary, and it can't be funded out of the three pennies, then perhaps we need to consider three point five pennies. That's just a question, I'm not advocating that, I'm just throwing the question out. But you know what, we need to support our schools, that's the bottom line.
I guess I'll, I'll kinda come back to this, I wanted to personally thank Dr. Taylor for the time, sitting down and reviewing the budget, and also, I sat down with Vicki Hurt for about two hours, and the, the amount of, the amount of justification she provided to get to two million was very, very insightful. The amount of passion that she has for the schools is actually unbelievable, so I very much value her, her passion, her, her focus to do everything she can for the schools and for the community, so I'm, I'm comfortable at that too.
She has the numbers.
Yeah, yeah, she's, she's very, very thorough, very grateful for her. Is there any other, go ahead.
There's still the issue of the legal fees that have actually gone up, when, if I've heard the information correctly on the school board meeting, you know, what you had, there are less children, if we're down to one, is that correct? We're down to one child, that's legal fees right now? Okay, so if we're down with one child, and Pam Sands Anderson, who is allegedly dealing with the area person, legal teams that deal with these type of situations, I know personally firsthand that they are one of the most expensive agencies in the past, I've used them, I have a family, and realized how expensive they were, and got a better team and dropped them, but anyways, is it not possible to reduce some of those legal fees?
And let me, I'm gonna, I'm gonna clarify my answer, there's one, there's one case that's dealing with the multiple due processes, as far as that it's, it's just a process to increase the amount of legal aid needed. There is one other family that we're involved with that has, has hired an attorney as well, so when they hire an attorney, they do it. I will say too, that Sands Anderson is most, that is the law firm for, that school divisions use for special education, you, you know, I think the only, the only, the one school division I know that doesn't is Henrico, because they've hired their own internal special education, and they have three interns, so, to handle schools, so...
And I think I've heard during the meeting, that that was not something that any of the board could even entertain, is hiring their own attorney, is that correct?
I don't believe you can hire, trying to find this, well, one, if you hired a special education lawyer, if you could find one and afford the cost, they still can't do all of your other legal work, it's a very specialized field, so...
If I could make a comment there, the, the interesting thing about our relationship with Sands Anderson is that if we don't need an attorney, we're not paying an attorney.
Well, that's just normal.
Well, no, oh, don't you pay one for the county? You've got one that comes, and you, you've got a salary.
She's sitting right there.
You have a, you have, okay, but we don't, we only have a, an attorney when we are in need of one, so if a due process is filed, and that, we have to go to court, that's when we engage our attorney.
I understand that.
Yeah.
I mean, that, that goes without saying.
Oh, it wasn't coming across that it was that clear, but thank you.
I'm, I'm still at that point of, okay, there's less things going on, why are we raising legal fees, or why are we raising school fees?
I believe that there was really good conversation at the school board meeting last week, and I'm, I'm very comfortable and confident in having the conversation that, I think everybody on the board plays a pivotal role on both boards of being a good steward of taxpayer dollars. I think with, with that said, we all owe it to the citizens that pay taxes, that we're trying to decide where this money goes, how it's spent. I don't see that it's a bad idea just to show a little faith and say, "Hey, we're gonna put a RFP out," or RFQ, whatever the case may be. We're not telling you that you have to change lawyers, we're not forcing your hand to change anything, we're just saying in good faith, that feel like it'd be a step in the right direction, to say, "We wanna do an RFP, we wanna get the, the request back, and we wanna make that public," so that we, we are showing good faith, we are doing this, we want everybody to see that these are the numbers, and I'm comfortable, but making that as a part of a motion to say, "I'm comfortable saying, okay, we can raise this up to the two million" with, with the knowledge of knowing that you guys are willing to go put RFP out there and see what's available. Just check the numbers.
Mr. Chair, can I speak, since I haven't spoke tonight?
Mr. McClellan.
My turn. As you all know, I do a lot of traveling, and the other night, I was in southwest Virginia, and I was told to, by seven different people, seven different people called me and said, "Did you watch the school workshop?" And I said, "No, I did not." And I've not talked to Vicki Hurt, I've not talked to Michelle Ward, I've watched it myself, on the old screen, sitting in the motel room. I got so mad that it was, it was ridiculous, I felt like I was in the Sands Anderson commercial, you know, it was, to be honest, speaking to another board member like that was very disrespectful, very disrespectful, and all they're trying to do is save the taxpayers some money. On top of that, while I was sitting watching the screen, I mean, several of them told me that the way Vicki was treated that night, she should've got out and walked out the building, which I would've done the same thing. If Bill would've talked to me like that, we'd been fighting in the parking lot after the meeting, very disrespectful, he wouldn't do that to me, though. At, watching the video, at minute forty-eight point forty-three, a board member said, "Bless their little hearts, the board is supervi-" "Bless their little hearts, the board of supervisors do not know what they're talking about." I tell you what, we do know what we're talking about. We're talking about saving taxpayers money. We, I, we get calls, you've heard every one of them say they get calls about, where's this money, where's this money, where's this money? Had two people come up here and speak earlier, where's the money, where's the money? You're spending hundred thousand dollars to win a thirteen hundred dollar case. You don't spend all that money, you just say you won. So, I don't know why you could do, you can't do, at least look at getting, looking at an RFP for a lawyer to support y'all. We have a great one. She supports the county and she supports the planning commission. She said, all this meeting, she's sitting right there, great attorney. She handles a lot of stuff for us. And to say that you don't have, and I did look at, to say that you can't get a, a specialized lawyer, yeah, you can. Yeah, you can. And it's a whole lot less than forty-some, four and some thousand dollars, whatever it is.
Three hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Yeah, whatever it is. We're paying the legal fees. I would much rather take the taxpayers' money and put it towards a person that works for the county than just throw it to Sands Anderson. I mean, it really looked like it was a promotional commercial for Sands Anderson. It was ridiculous. And I got so mad, I'm still mad over it, so I didn't say nothing tonight. But, um, if I could cut the lawyer fees out, I'd cut it out myself, I'd cut it out. But I'm not good, I can't do that without support.
Mr. Chair. Madam Chair, Mr. Chair. Yes.
I'm not done.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize.
I'm not done. So, I would like, I'm done. I don't wanna stop. And watch what y'all say on mic, because it's recorded. You go back and look at what every word was said. Forty-eight point forty-three, very disrespectful, very disrespectful. And Vicky is a friend of mine, I have not talked to Vicky. I watched this thing in a motel room in southwest Virginia, very disturbing. I'm, I'm furious over it. I'm not the only one. My constituents are mad, people that have called me are mad. The night that that meeting was, that, before I watched the, they called and asked me, did I see what, what happened? I said, no, I didn't see it. You need to watch it, call me back. I watched it, called him back, mad. It, that was very disrespectful. I would hate to see the, the, our board ever do anything like that, even though we have differences. But all that Michelle and Vicky were trying to do is save some freaking taxpayers money, 'cause they have, they go, you know, they have their little coffee chats and they have their, their meetings, their town halls, all the time. And, you know, I, I, I know, I watched the whole video. Some people said, in the video, um, why do they come to y'all with questions and not us? It's because y'all hold town halls, just like Mr. Kenny did. Town halls, coffee chats, you go to meetings, you go to events, you talk to people. So, when you talk to people, you're gonna get feedback. When you get feedback, you learn from that. And you see how important it is to represent the people that's in your district and the county, which we all pay taxes. And we're raising taxes, supposedly, but, um, we're raising taxes. It's gonna be a big increase, but it's, um, long time coming. All right, I'm done.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, Ms. Brown.
A minute.
I, I've watched, I've watched.
Wait a minute, just a minute, if you, wait, just a minute.
I told him he could go.
You could, okay.
She gave me permission.
Okay.
Appreciate you looking out for her. I watched that meeting twice. And I, I agree with Steve. But here's what I've come to learn after almost a year and a few months in this position. People have passion for things. And sometimes that passion is expressed in indelicate ways, and sometimes their passion, sometimes results in them saying and doing things that they probably would not normally do. I'm not trying to alibi for that at all. I think some apologies are probably in order within your school board. But I recognize, 'cause I've been at the, the, the brunt end of a lot of passion and a lot of things said very negatively directed at me personally. And what I'm trying to do is recognize that that passion is sometimes expressed in ways that are not kind. That doesn't, but I'd rather have someone with passion than being milquetoast about, about what they're talking about. So, I'm not, not making any, any, any alibis for what, what, what transpired there. But I, I just want folks to, to, I appreciate the passion for the school system that the school board exhibits. And I, I, I hope you continue to be passionate about the kids and what you're doing.
Naomi, thank you. Um, as far as, I was out of town last week. But as far as Sands Anderson and the attorney fees go, if, me personally, I have no allegiance to Sands Anderson, they didn't mean anything to me until I got on this board. However, if you have an attorney that has been working for you on a specific case with specific defendants for three years, three and a half years, four years, you don't change attorneys in the middle. And that is why we voted down the last, like, three school board, but I can't even remember when it was. We voted down doing an RFP because it would be a waste of our time, because we're not going to change attorneys in the middle of files.
Litigation, yeah.
That's all there is to it.
Mr. Chair.
It shouldn't, yeah, it, it shouldn't even be, it's already been voted down by this board once, that we're not going to do an RFP. We can do an RFP. We're not gonna vote, or I'm not, let's put it like that, I'm not gonna vote to switch attorneys in the middle of litigation. Because by the time the person that you hired to come in has gone over everything else, you might as well have just paid the original attorney. That's, that's my point. That's why we voted down.
Litigation, I'm sure our lawyer can answer that, simple question.
We are in the middle of litigation at this point. There is no point in doing an RFP, it would be a waste of our time, an attorney's time. At the point that we are done with this specific person, then we can look at it at that point. But right now, we're in the middle of it, we're in the weeds.
Mr. Chair.
What, what's really?
Ms. McCloud, go ahead.
I agree with you. You don't change up in the middle of something. What I'm saying is, to look, I said, you know, it can't be done now. You're in the middle of processing. We need some assurance when this is done. I mean, if you put an RFP out, it goes to who you want it to go to. You put your parameters in there, what you want. If you're looking for a specific attorney, you ask for a specific attorney to come represent you.
I just don't see a light.
So, we do with Cali. I mean, it, it's, you don't change midterm, midstream, I know that. But if it's possible to get this, whoever's left, the people that are left, to get them done and look at an RFP to get a lawyer to where it would make the constituents of Palatine very happy. Because it's a lot of money. They, they, they look at, they're, I mean, I'm not saying now, I'm talking, I'm talking about when this is over with, whenever it's over with. Look at an RFP, and Sands Anderson may win the RFP.
Yeah.
But they'll be working for you directly.
Mr. and Mrs. Chair, in regards to that, I would, I would concur. You know, for, if we were to consider going back and looking at, putting out an RFP to have a, possibly a full-time attorney onboard, and however, for this particular case, this one case that we are in the midst of, we could continue to still, if, let's say we found another firm or an individual attorney that would come on full board with us, you could have Sands Anderson continue on with that one particular case. Goochlin County has done that. There's another, two, I think, one or two other counties that have done that. They have let Sands Anderson go. They've hired their own attorney, but they kept Sands Anderson on to continue on, you know, with that particular case, which I agree. They're already, they know that case. Again, they've defended it eight, nine, ten, eleven times. They should be able to argue that case in their sleep, which is one reason why I have a hard time with them taking three and four attorneys to the same case, to the same due process every time.
Mr. Chair.
But, you know, that way you're still moving forward and you're making progress. You're not waiting for the other shoe to fall. You know, and just letting Sands Anderson go, if that's what we decided as a board to go.
So, we have two attorneys, we have Sands Anderson, and the county's gonna pay for another attorney and Sands Anderson?
If you had, let's say, for example, we hired an attorney that was for, for the school board at, say, a hundred and fifty, a hundred and seventy-five thousand for the year. Okay? So, and I'm just throwing out a number. I have no idea what our county attorney makes. But I'm just throwing out a, a number. But that would be our full-time attorney. Now, again, special ed, I'm gonna stum, I'm gonna disagree. Special ed is a specialized category, but it's not rocket science. Okay? We have a special ed book that's about three-quarters of an inch thick. A lot of it is just common sense. Again, I'm in a profession. I, I can pivot from a cardiac patient to a pediatric patient to a, a cancer patient. Am I gonna be great at every single one of those needs? Possibly not. But it may only take me a few days or a week to brush up on, you know, what I may have not done consistently. So, I'm just, my only request is to try and be fiscally responsible and not allow just hundreds of thousands of dollars to continue to, to, to go and, without trying to put some type of a stop date.
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, Dr. Taylor. Oh, you don't? Okay. Go ahead.
Please. I, I would encourage you not to wait to put out the RFP. I would do it now. I, I was interested to watch that school board meeting, and within, within less than twenty-four hours, there was another diatribe and another series of legal accusations that were, were put on the books by Mrs. Lucas. That's not going to end. It's not gonna end. So, there's going to be, if you're gonna make this transition from Sands Anderson to your own attorney, there's going to be, you're gonna be paying double for a while. Just swallow real hard and know that. But if you're, if you're gonna change horses, you don't do it, you don't put this new person on that litigation, finish with Sands Anderson. But I would encourage you to put this RFP out now. If for no other reason, just the optics of it will improve the situation.
Due diligence, that you're, that you're due diligence, that you're trying to appropriate the right action, that's all.
I got no problem if you wanna attach it to a motion, I'm good with that.
I was gonna ask if anybody else wanted to make a motion. I don't mind making a motion, but if anybody else wanted to, that's fine, too.
Mr. Chairman, I, I don't mind the motion. I, I think that the motivation's good for it. But if you're, if you're doing that within the context of the two million bucks, I, I don't know that we have, I don't know where you're gonna ke, where you're gonna find the money. If you're gonna make a motion and impose it on, on Mr. Shardine, if that's what you wanna do, I'm just saying, it's, you're stepping out there a little bit.
If I may, I would just say that we've heard you and a motion's not needed. I think at this point in the budget process, we need more information. We're, I think, as a board, we're probably willing to go back and look at this. But to make a motion and force us in something that numbers may change seems a little premature, from my standpoint. So, a good faith is what I would ask for from y'all.
Is everybody in favor of that?
As long as we go through the process, yes. Of doing an RFP, RFPs are not hard, I do them all the time. If y'all want me to write one up for a specialized lawyer.
So, if we do an RFP, y'all are gonna pay for our current attorneys to deal with that person, 'cause she keeps picking up clients.
Until the case is done.
And, and a new attorney.
She just said it's, you're not paying an RFP, it doesn't mean you're gonna hire him.
Yes.
Get the RFP done.
So, what are we doing with them? So, we're just getting an estimate, we're kinda, not really wasting time, but, so that's what you all are suggesting, is that we send out an RFP to get information from other attorneys about what they would charge us while still using Sands Anderson. So, it, when do we put down a hire date? We don't know a stop date for this. I wish we did. Because I'm not even sure, once we have an attorney, if we don't have this person, do we really need a full-time attorney? I think we would have to look into our needs to see if we actually even, that's fiscally responsible. If you have just someone sitting there doing nothing all day as an attorney working for us, I'm not sure that they would, because it's this one specific issue.
Well, we can look at your legal fees over the last three years and say, oh, heck yeah, you need ours somebody.
And then we can have that.
You spent your legal fees the first three months of last year. We allocated, we allocated money last year. It was spent the first three months.
Take a, excuse me, take a look back past the last three years. Go a little bit further back. Our attorney fees didn't go past thirty-five thousand.
That's, that's the key. So, if we're gonna.
So, there's more to this than what you are, the board of supervisors are truly either looking at all the facts that are a piece of this attorney fee, or you just don't know all of the facts. And, um,
I have the numbers.
No, I'm not talking about numbers. I'm talking about situation. I'm talking about understanding why we are in the situation that we are.
The advocate is your challenge.
But there's pieces to that as well. There are pieces to that as well.
Is the school board willing to, to move in that direction? I know, I got a verbal, that you're comfortable with that?
I am, but I'm just one member and I'm not the chair, so if, uh.
Well, here's the interesting piece. We had that discussion, but we should never have had it. Because according to Robert's Rules of Order, that motion had been already brought before the board. It had been voted on and defeated. And the two people bringing it up, according to Robert's Rules of Order, were not supposed to bring it up back up to the table. So, it's interesting to me. And like I said, there are pieces to the puzzle that if you know it, you wouldn't be so determined that we needed a motion and trying to force the board to do something that we have already said we are not prepared to do at this time.
Mr. Chairman. I think that the board supervisors, let me, let me say, I'm speaking for myself only, has said that because of all the feedback we're getting from our constituents, in a situation where we're being asked to raise, potentially raise taxes and provide more money to the schools, I would suggest to you that if going out and getting a quote from other attorneys and covering that base, I would strongly suggest that the school board reconsider their position.
It will have to be brought up by one of the members that voted for the, um,
You, you handle your affairs as you thinks best, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you.
But, but I, I would say that, that's, that's something we're looking for you to do.
Ms. Chairman, I just have one question for Brett before we start making motions on giving money away. Do we need to discuss the advertised tax rate at this time before we start discussing how much money we're gonna give the schools?
Yeah, so that's one thing we need to come out of here tonight is with direction from the board on what tax rate to advertise. So, again, to emphasize, that is just a rate we're advertising. We cannot exceed that rate in what we adopt without going back and re-advertising. You can always go lower. We don't need, don't need to decide to, tonight, what we would or wouldn't fund the schools. I think, I understand we've gotten some direction on the interest in a pilot program, you know, trying to do what we could do to fund additional two million rather than one point five. So, with you all, that right there would be roughly a penny to do that. So, that would be seventy-three cents. So, is, it would be about another penny on the tax rate to cover, to cover that, to get us to two million total. So, as long as we are advertising that or more with the other direction that we have from you all, I think we're, we're good that school's gonna go back and work on seeing how they can, you know, move things around. We'll be in communication with them. So, I don't think we need to vote or decide tonight we're doing exactly this. I believe you've made your intent clear on what the schools is asking for and what you could live with and what you'd like to see, and the board is open to considering. So, the next step would just be, we need to know what tax rate to advertise that could cover that at least.
With that said, let's move to item D, discussion of the.
Mr. Chair, before we, before we do, if I could just make a, a statement in regards to, hopefully, a correction. In regards to when this was brought up during our budget workshop, that was during the budget time. And in my interpretation of the Robert's Rule of Order, when I brought that up last year during budget time, it was brought up and it was discussed during budget. And so, this, because this is a new year with a new budget, then it was appropriate to bring it up in discussion, of course, and never even got to a point for a vote, but that's why it was brought up. Of course, it never even got to a point for a vote, but that's why it was brought up for discussion, because this is a new year, and according to Robert's Rule of Order and a new budget, then the ability was to be able to bring that back up. So in clarification, that is my interpretation, and that would be another good reason to have an attorney full-time to help us clarify that at our meetings. But, so that is my interpretation, and wanted to clarify, that's why it was brought back up. It wasn't done deliberately out of character or, you know, of malice. It was based on the information of how I've interpreted Robert's Rule of Order, that because it's in a current budget year workshop, that I was able to bring it up for discussion. So thanks for the clarification opportunity.
Yep. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, are we going to, at this meeting, set the advertised rate?
That's the goal.
Is that what we're gonna do?
Due to the legal ad deadlines, we would need direction tonight to know what to advertise.
Okay. In that regard, Mr. Chairman, could I have a moment of the board's time? Brett has, in his operating budget, I believe, asked for three pennies. Is that correct? And we just talked about the potential of adding another penny to make sure that the schools are whole at $2 million. So that's four pennies. I passed out to everybody a document here called PCPS, Mission Critical Projects. I realize this is CIP discussion, but it has bearing on the tax rate. I asked Dr. Tigan and Mr. Benway, and they were very kind in responding with this document. And I said, "Look, we're being asked to look at potentially raising taxes, which is a very unpleasant task for our staff to deal with. And I wanna look at your critical projects based on four criteria. Is, it has to be in the, a priority one project from the engineers, from the engineering study. It needs to be only concerned with a structural or a mechanical system. It must have impact, potentially negative impact, on the health and safety of student or staff. And you've gotta be able to implement it in five years. You have to have the staff to actually implement it." So with those, with that criteria, Dr. Tigan and Mr. Benway were good enough to come up with this list. It totals $21,865,894. That's three pennies. That's three pennies. And I would ask my board colleagues, insofar as they feel that those criteria are necessary and good criteria, and they agree that we need to take care of these facility issues for the schools, I would ask that we at least have debate around this, which would take the tax rate that we would advertise from four cents to, this is higher math, to seven. To advertise it. There may be some things on here that my board colleagues say, "Ah, no, no." But that's debate that we could do in the ensuing weeks that we have before we have to finalize this. So I just ask you to consider it. It represents three pennies. And these school facility issues are not going to become less expensive or get any better over time.
Ms. Powers, is it three pennies over the time of the debt?
I'm sorry?
It's three pennies annually until it's paid. If you're looking at borrowing, correct?
Yeah, yeah. You have, yeah. It's, you're not gonna take, borrow the money and then lower the tax next cycle by three pennies. You're signing up for three pennies. And what, we normally advertise those sorts of things over, what is the normal bond period? 20 years?
But that's fun and everything, at one time, you know, some of these projects don't even have to start till 2030.
I didn't, I didn't, I didn't, I asked them to do those criteria. And that's what they came up with.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. McLaughlin.
I just don't think we can solve all the world's, the schools' problems in one budget season. And I appreciate this. This is good. This is what I live off of. This is in my wheelhouse. But I was in a meeting earlier this week, and we had a list just like this prioritized. Had to cut $12 million out. So...
I'm not saying, I'm not saying don't cut it.
It needs to be cut, yeah, okay.
I'm with you.
But I appreciate this. It's very good.
But we're not talking about locking this into concrete. This is simply something we're gonna advertise. We can still come back and lower it. The challenge comes in if we raise it, but we gotta go all the way back through the advertising, right? I mean...
Yeah. I'm getting, I'm getting feedback from constituents already, just based off 72. And with our conversations tonight, we're thinking about 73, based on what the school needs. And now you're looking for three more on top of that. I'm not, I'm personally not comfortable advertising any higher than 75.
Ms. Chairman, if I could... Sure. And I'm not sure if you've looked at this, but one of the documents I did send you was I took a hypothetical situation of a $650,000 home appraised at that level, and looked at the impact to go from 69 to 76. It amounted to an additional $1,015 on the taxes. Hundred dollars a month. Now, I don't wanna sneeze at $1,000, but at some point in time, we're going to, we're gonna have to find a way to fund these things. Because all these things on this list, this represents $21 million out of schools asking for 100. This is not going overboard and being wild and crazy. And I'm not, I'm not skilled enough, I don't have the skills, to say what on this to potentially cut. I'm not an engineer. I have to trust Mr. Benway and the engineering staff and Dr. Tigan.
So, Ms. Chairman, two points. One, this doesn't include any CIP projects the county wants to...
Exactly correct.
So I am not comfortable going above .75. And two, it's easy to sit here in a room and say, "Well, it only makes this much difference." When you can afford it. It's when you can afford it. But I'm getting emails already saying, "Dude, you wanna raise it three pennies? I'm already struggling to pay what I got now." So, you know, and the other thing that bothers me is, you know, I want accountability. If we're gonna start doing stuff like this, we need to start having discussions about putting allocation budgets for the school, because I got a comprehensive study from 2014 that's got about $10 million worth of capital improvement projects they wanted started back then that never got to the board's attention. Nobody knew about it. I don't want that to happen from this day going forward. And I also want, you know, to the point on the legal fees and some of the other stuff, we need to start, it's not that I don't trust the schools, it's that the county is starting not to. And so we, while we can't control what the school spends, we can put it in allocation budgets, so if they wanna move money from instructional over to legal, they gotta get our permission to do it.
So you wanna go to category funding?
I do wanna go to category funding, and we're gonna talk, but we can't do it this year, but we're gonna definitely talk about it for next year. But I don't, I don't see funding all this CIP stuff right now, and I'm with the chairman, and I don't feel comfortable going above 75.
Even at the advertised level?
Even on the advertised level.
Okay, that's fine. Look, I just wanted to bring your attention to it.
No, and...
I'm not advocating at all...
Trust me, Robert, we appreciate your research. We really do.
I'm just telling you what keeps us straight. What Dr. Tigan and Benway have said. Mr. Benway, excuse me.
I get it.
Thank you.
Somebody make a motion.
So, Ms. Chairman?
Ms. Chairman.
I'd like to make a motion that we advertise the current county tax rate as 0.75 cents.
One second. Question? At 75, does that include taking the schools to 2 million?
It's just the tax rate. We can, we can...
We can work that out.
It's just a motion for the tax rate, Robert, not announced.
We just can't go above...
To what we're gonna advertise the tax rate at.
I get that, but if you set it at 75, Brett says he needs three and a penny more, a penny more, to take care of the schools.
Well, then somebody might have to do some cutting.
I'm not arguing with that. I just wanna make sure...
I don't wanna go any more than six cents, period. And that's the motion on the floor. Either you vote or...
No, no, no. I know, I just wanted to have a little discussion with you, my friend.
Well, we, okay, we have the motion. He seconded it. Okay, let's have the discussion.
Well, I'm done discussing it with you.
Okay, 'cause I'm not, I'm...
I understand your position.
Not gonna go above .75.
I get it. Understand.
Mr. Shardi, can you roll call a vote for the advertisement, please?
Yeah, Chair, second you. Mr. McLaughlin?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Ms. Morsette?
Aye.
Vice Chair Kenny?
Aye.
Chair Donati?
Aye. Thank you.
All right, that brings us to item number eight. Superintendent comments?
Thank you for the robust conversation.
And we still love you.
Excuse me?
We still love you.
Well, thank you. But I know it's the hours late, so I will defer to the county administrator so that we can, we can get staff home.
Yeah, just a couple things. Got a note that the slides we were going weren't visible to the public at home, so we'll make sure those are distributed or put out somehow, if anybody's watching and couldn't see that. And we can see them here in the room, so assumed everybody at home was playing along as well, but we'll make sure that's out there for the public. There's a comment about wanting to see additional collaboration efficiencies with school and county, and that is something we're certainly all in favor of, and something we've been working towards. So I just wanted to share a few things. One, superintendent is now part of our county leadership team, where we have monthly meetings with all of our department heads, various agencies. That's relatively new and very welcome to have schools officially in that collaboration. So that's where a lot of things come out, because we're learning, you know, what Central Services has going on, what they're doing, and what Planning's doing, and what 911's doing. And so when you have that collaboration, then we see opportunities, well, hey, we're also doing that same thing, let's talk about that. So that's relatively new, and I think we'll hopefully see some additional things come out of that. You know, we collaborate, we have quarterly meetings with the chair and vice chairs of both groups, and that's something we've been doing for a couple of years, I think. But that's a good opportunity where we talk about this, and how do we collaborate, and what more efficiencies can we have. Some examples we're either doing or have looked at, our software for the countywide, we went onto the Keystone system. Years ago, when we did that, we approached schools. There was not interest, but then I think it was probably Debbie, when she came in, had worked with Keystone, and schools actually proposed it back to us, I believe, to, hey, let's get on the same software system. So now, now we are. We have one unified software across both counties. Recently, I believe Schools has gotten onto the county's FOIA software programming, so we're not having two different ones, or, you know, if somebody wants information, they don't have to navigate two different systems, there's one unified system. Something we haven't done yet, but we've been exploring with both of our IT departments, is could we get a grant through E-Rate to do some of the fiber connectivities between buildings and work together to jointly do that, rather than doing it separately. We did try, I believe it was in the last budget, a joint procurement position, to have that jointly. I believe you all approved it, but it was just very hard to fill. We could not find anybody for that. So that one wasn't a success, but it was something that we went out there and we tried it. They're not all gonna work out, but we'll probably end up back there again at some point, but for now, doing our own procurement thing, we tried. And then lastly, I would just say the transportation facility, you know, Schools run that, but you serve county vehicles, sheriff, fire, UMS. And when we've had issues, School has really done a great job, I think, to adapt and change and work with us on that, and there's efficiencies in working together on that. So I'm sure plenty more opportunities, but we are definitely open to them and have stronger collaboration than ever, and so I think the fruits of that will continue to come out. So I just wanted to share that. And again, would echo Superintendent in saying, appreciate the frank discussion on, you know, the important funding and tax rates and all that, that are critical to the success of the county. Appreciate it.
Any School Board comments?
Mr. Ward. Basically, I would just like to thank all of the Board of Supervisors to wanting to partner with us. And again, we do have the responsibility to, here, as far as I'm concerned, on the school board, to make sure that our children are properly educated, to make sure that we have, you know, a great, a great program that we offer to our community. People move to this county for our schools. They move here because of our school systems. I came here 30-plus years ago because of our school system. And so this is, it's very important that we educate our children properly, and there's a lot, there's a lot of moving parts. I'm still learning a lot of moving parts, and then we'll continue to learn about moving parts. The common sense attitude that I'm really trying to come and make decisions with, to me, is the majority of our community. Our community wants us to apply common sense. They want us to make good judgment decisions. Sometimes, you know, I remember being told, you know, you got a bird in a hand, and you're gonna let that one go for one in the bush. You know, so it's making good, good decisions. And again, sometimes the outcome doesn't work out the way you want. So like, discussing for the trial for the alternative education, I think that would be a great compromise, so I appreciate the input. And I know our superintendent is gonna do a great job with her team, and we're here to support her as a board for that. I definitely feel that there's a need there. And I feel that, you know, the governance that we are trying to provide on our boards, both school and for the county, I really do think that, that intently, everyone's making the good decision for our constituents. I think we're, you know, we're really trying to weigh everything that you have to do to run this county and the schools, so thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Taylor, any comments?
No, I don't think I have anything to add.
Mrs. Wade?
No, I don't have anything to add.
Okay. The only thing I have is to say that we, I know one of the, using that Keystone program and being able to pay our workers twice a month is a goal that we still have. We appreciate that opportunity, so, you know, the more we can work through whatever complications that seems to be in the way of that, I hope we can do that. And in regard to teachers and students and teaching over the internet, I certainly hope that as many times as we have asked if, whether or not, to know whether or not our families have access to internet, that our teachers and our administrators are doing a good job of knowing which families do not have that connection, and making sure that they have paper copies, or they have their work lined out in another way so that they don't miss assignments. So we have been working on that for sure. And we appreciate you guys coming to our house and the discussion that we've had this evening. Thank you.
Any Board Supervisor comments?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. McLaughlin.
I don't have a com, well, I do have a comment, but anyway. How many, I'm sitting right here, how many have been asked about where is the Christmas Mother going? Raise your hand. We gotta find a place for the Christmas Mother. I don't know what we gotta do. I can't go anywhere in the county without getting bombarded. What do y'all do with the Christmas Mother? Where are we gonna put it? We've got to find a place for the Christmas Mother.
Yeah, we met yesterday with her again, so not a solution yet, but we're trying to help find something as well.
We got to find somewhere, so, thank you. That's all I have.
Anybody else? I just wanted to thank everybody. I feel like everybody had the same goal in mind, it's just the path in which to get there. It was a little rocky, but we got there, so thank you all. Meeting adjourned.